Good evening, everyone. This is Herbatch, the mayor of the city of Westminster. I'd like to welcome you at this time to the August 10th, 2020 Westminster City Council meeting. In order to start the meeting tonight, I'd like you to take a moment and pause with us. Join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, Ms. Parker, would you take the council role, please?
Certainly. Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Counselor Damott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Here.
Counselor Seymour. Counselor Seymour, I don't think we heard your audio. Could you try one more time?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith. And Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Thank you. Council, the first item on the agenda tonight is item number three, the minutes of the July 27th meeting. Mr. Hang on a second. I had several come in at one time. Mr. Damott, you're up first.
Thank you. I move that the city council approved the minutes of the July 27th, 2020 meeting as presented.
Ms. Scully.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? There are none. The motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is presentations. We have none scheduled for this evening. I will move on to item five. Ms. Parker, do you have anything for a public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the only advanced public comment that we received, in fact, the only request to share public comment was in your packet from Pat Bird, and that was a written comment that was submitted in advance.
Okay. Thank you very much. There being no other requests, we'll move on to the next item. The report of city officials. Mr. Tripp, floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I don't have anything to report tonight, just to say we're glad to be here with all of you and thank you for your, for your, your time and efforts, council. I appreciate that a lot.
Mr. Mayor, apologies. We did receive a voicemail. I apologize. We do have one other voicemail comment that Matt Williams is prepared to play at this time.
Go ahead and play it, please.
Yes. I am a resident and homeowner in the city of Westminster. I reside at 13240 T-Hom Street. My first comment would be that I was wanting to take advantage of the dollar, hundred dollar credit on zero escaping and so forth. Had emails from Mr. Drinkwater, who basically told me, because I was doing it by myself, I wasn't eligible. To me, that's discrimination against me as a homeowner and the fact that I am a senior citizen living on a fixed income. And secondly, an even bigger problem to me is 100, excuse me. T-Hom Street is a through street from 136th to 132nd. Consequently, with construction going on, et cetera, a lot of people choose to use T-Hom. We do not have a stop sign. We do not have patrolmen. We do not have anything to deter speeders. The speed limit posted at 25. Ha ha, what a damn joke. Consequently, and you may note that when school is back in session, the bus stop is right across the street from my house and that bus driver loads and unloads 35 to 40 school age children daily. Consequently, I think we need a little more action from the city and the police department. Thank you very much. Any questions? My name is Bruce Uchida. U C H I D A. I can be reached at 303-255-9236. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Parker, is that the only recording we have?
Yes, sir. Confirmed that is the only one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tripp, you've indicated there are no reports for city officials. I'll move on to council comments. And if you would, please put in, because I had a number of people came at the same time. Ms. Scully, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank our Westminster PD for, they, they joined with the Community Reach Center to provide a mental health co-responder program to help citizens and families in Westminster who are struggling with mental or behavioral health crises. This is a grant funded program and it will employ two full-time licensed therapists who will work out of the PD and are available for immediate response alongside our officers to 911 calls and non-emergency calls. And I just wanted to congratulate our department and thank them for a great program, bringing a great program to our city. And then also wanted to congratulate the class of 2020. Many ceremonies were held in the last couple of weeks, both in Adams and in JFCO and in Westminster Public Schools. It was very interesting. My daughter was one of those graduates and very interesting and, and just so therapeutic to be able to put closure to that school year in person. Many parents, I, I, I join many parents around Westminster who have gone through the school systems K through 12th. And this was a hard time for all of us as we didn't really have any closure or any time to say goodbye to even our friends, but to our children's friends and to help our children put closure to this time of their lives. So thank you to the school districts who were able to provide those ceremonies and congratulations, class of 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sikes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with giving some updates on meetings I attended last week. The first one I wanted to give a report on was on the US 36 MCC mayors and commissioners meeting. I did want to just go over real quickly what we went through. There was a report from the federal lobbyist. Going over kind of a lot, and a lot has changed since just Thursday with the president's executive orders, but kind of talking about the impasse between the Senate and the House on their different types of stimulus. With so much going to be going around stimulus, I'm, I'm wondering if we should consider participating in that federal lobbyist or our own federal lobbyist again, just having been kind of sitting in for that conversation. Our state lobbyists gave a recap and a rundown on the year. The JBC is, Joint Budget Committee is, is actively meeting, but the state's going to be in hard shape based off of COVID and the economics reality, realities around that. An example of how that impacts transportation is in the highway user trust fund, which is down 62.9 million dollars during the time of COVID, just from, that's the gas tax. So that's just people doing less trips in their cars. So it's going to have significant impact. In Westminster, what that means is part of our paving program for our roads. So definitely something to, to be watching and wary of. They did mention that there is a bill that did not make it through this last year at the state legislature that will probably have a second iteration. This is using electric vehicles. If you have one, you would be free in tollways. And obviously, those are two kind of competing values, but revenue might would be, you know, less if, if we allow that. So there's some concern about that. They also mentioned a ballot measure that is coming over to, to lower the flat state income tax rate. And there was a question by one of the members, did the US 36 MCC want to take a, a formal position opposing that? And they did not have the discussion. I think the idea was to allow everyone to go back to their councils and see if there was any appetite to formally agree to, to allow the US 36 MCC to oppose that because of the dire revenue situation the state is going to be in. They did talk about the governance of the body itself, but how it was left is that the staff for the US 36 MCC are going to come back, having documented what the current practice is. And then kind of that will be the starting off point to, to make discussions on governance. And then let's see here. Finally, the Front Range Rail gave a presentation and that appears to be cooking right along. There was even joking, although it wasn't very humorous, that there may be train service from, you know, Longmont to Denver and Fort Collins, rather, to Pueblo prior to there being RTD's FastTrax completion. So it, it does seem to be moving along. Then I had the CC4CA Steering Committee meeting. It was a great meeting. We have a new chair, Christine, or Kristen, rather, Bertuglia from Vail. We had again another policy kind of recap on what's going on at the State House. I have forwarded an email on to you guys, I think about a week ago. There's a lot of rule makings going on right now. There's an opportunity to sign on to a letter to the governor, talking about those statewide emission goals. So if anyone wants to participate in that, I have forwarded that on to you so you could, you know, work on a, on an individual level. So those are, those are my two meetings that I attended on behalf of the city. I wanted to take a moment to recognize our volunteers. Normally every year, the city of Westminster says thank you to the volunteers that really help us provide the services and amenities that our community loves. And we are very fortunate to have a very strong volunteer base in this city. And simply, it saves us millions of dollars. I think it builds community affinity. When people give back, they make, it makes us love the community even more. But due to COVID, we're not going to be able to have our traditional barbecue. Instead, there will be kind of a drive-through wave, you know, wave, wave outline. I know the mayor will be attending on behalf of all of council and there'll be a limited number of staff. It's not the way we wanted to say thank you, but please know that we appreciate you. This community is wonderful because of our residents and we are just so fortunate to have all of your efforts giving, giving back. So thank you. And then similar to Counselor Scully, I do just want to really quickly talk about our schools. All three school districts at this point have talked about their plans for starting again. And whether your child's going into kindergarten or starting their senior year or anywhere in between, I, I'm sure it's not exactly what you hoped for. But I am so thankful that we have such wonderful school boards and school districts that have been so thoughtful, that really care about the education of our kids, the social emotional health and their physical safety and health, and have done everything that they can to make the best out of a very hard situation. I'd ask everyone to give some patience and grace to try to make this a positive experience for our kids and to lean on each other as neighbors for, for extra help. This is going to be a challenge, but I know when we are optimistic, we work hard and we stick together. We can meet those challenges head on. So good luck to all the kids that are getting ready for school. And good luck to those parents. I know for a lot of us, we're going to be wearing a lot of hats that we're not, that, that, that may not be welcome, but I know we're up to the challenge. Have a good night.
Mr. Damott.
Thank you. I just want to take a quick moment to give recognition to some folks in the community. If you're not familiar, the Westminster Police Department hosts a Citizen Academy twice a year. People who graduate from that program are able to join into alumni association. This last week, some of our alumni members went out and did a support the police kind of flag waving in Offalawthworth. And I just want to take time to recognize those folks for recognizing our law enforcement. And I think now more than ever, it's very important for us to recognize the people that go and do that very dangerous job and show them appreciation. In my mind, they're getting a lot of bad press that they don't deserve over a couple of bad apples, and I think that's unfortunate. The other thing I want to mention is if you're listening to this meeting now, I would encourage you to listen to our post meeting. We're going to be, I, I had asked for an exec, or not an executive session, but a study session item over Senate Bill 20217, which very drastically impacts the way that law enforcement is handled in the state of Colorado. And I think it's good for the citizens to understand how that bill impacts law enforcement and how they respond to your needs. And so with that, I would encourage you to listen to that tonight. I would also encourage you to talk to people within law enforcement so you understand exactly what the legislator did to law enforcement this last year in the state of Colorado.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. This past week, Counselor Damott and I did virtual roll call meetings with our PD department to explain our appreciation. And furthermore, we are interested in getting back in person and to meet with our PD to find out more about how we could support them as a council. So looking forward to that. I'm also going to relinquish my time to a council comment by Pat Bird. We did receive it in our packets here, but I, I wanted to be a voice for those that like to write in to let us know about their thoughts. It's, it's great that we have it in our packets, but I think that also it needs to be read into the record. So on behalf of Pat Bird, I will be reading her comments here. In a Westminster Window article a few weeks ago, Bill Christopher reported on a recent survey of residents of Westminster. It was interesting that the responses to the survey were that many people think there is too much density planned in Westminster. The Westminster City Council needs to pay attention to residents of Westminster. The proposed 2,350 units for the area bordering on Federal and between 84th and 88th will cause a lot more density and traffic congestion. I think that at least two employed people will be needed to purchase one of those units, so that could mean 4,700 cars. How can that area handle 4,700 more cars traveling on the streets? Where will those cars be parked? The units probably won't have two car garages, but the council thinks those people will use the light rail on Federal. They are dreaming. Maybe some will be able to depend on where their jobs are located, but most will probably be driving their car. And how much water will 4,700 people and their families use in, in a day besides the watering of lawns and supposed park areas? There are articles in the Denver Post stating that we are in a drought and reports on TV news is that every part of Colorado is in some stage of drought. The supply of water is decreasing. It doesn't matter how much the council raises water rates. Money doesn't make water. How many paired homes are being built on 88th and Lowell? How many units are being proposed on the southwest corner of 104th and Sheridan? How many apartments condos are at the old Westminster Mall? How many condos and townhomes are being built by the water towers at Federal and 96? Enough building, stop it. Pat Bird. I relinquished the rest of my time to my fellow councilman. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, could you indicate where she's from, please?
Yes, sir. 10662 Burr Drive, Northland 80234.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers have any comments? All right, seeing no other comments, Mr. Bowles, you had to put in a request to bring forward the motion for the consent agenda, if you would, please.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda, item 8A.
Okay, Ms. Scully.
A second.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Parker.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Damott.
Yes.
Damott votes yes. Mayor Pro Tem cites.
Yes.
Sites votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. And Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Bowles votes yes.
All right. Thank you. Council consent agenda was passed on an unanimous motion. Moving on to item number nine on the agenda, we have no appointments and no resignations tonight. First item on the piece of business for us tonight is item 10A. First one up I have is Ms. Sikes.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe I'm up, but I can make the motion if you'd like.
Well, you're the only one after Ms. Scully in the queue. So it's either you or Mr. Damott. If you don't want it, I'll pass it to Mr. Damott.
Okay, I'm not in the queue.
All right, Mr. Damott, are you up?
No, sir. I didn't put my name in.
Okay, let me try again. Mr. Seymour. If you care to make the second on item 10A.
I will make the motion if, if that's correct. I moved to pass Counselor's Bill number 26 on first reading, authorizing the amendments to chapters 8-7 and 8-8 and 8-12 of the Westminster Municipal Code Regarding the City's Water, Reclaimed Water, Sewer Utilities and Utility Service Rules.
Ms. Scully.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Bowles, you had submitted that you have a question on item 10A.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. No, I was just on there as a second. I came in, I think, by mistake, along with Counselor Scully to second the motion. Sorry about that.
All right, but you did submit a question on item 10A.
No, I did not.
Okay. Mr. Damott, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I'm so going through this and we haven't had an extensive study session on some of the changes that are in here, and I'm kind of concerned as I read through the packet. And so my, I have two questions specifically that I'm just curious that kind of lend to an overall curiosity I have about the substantial amount of red lines that are being proposed here. And so one of the things that I consistently through, see through the change is things that are adopted by the Director of Public Works and Utility, who is hereby granted the authority to enact, amend or propagate such rules as are necessary. And I'm going to go ahead and hit the other topic that I'm concerned about so that when appropriate person comes forward to answer the question, they can get both at once. One other area that I'm trying to understand is in the packet on page seven of 13, in regards to this item, there's the, a line that says, "User shall mean the owner of property upon which non-potable or reclaimed water is to be utilized for landscape irrigation and struck out as fire protection commercial and industrial use." So I'm just curious, one, about giving away the authority or defining it that way, and if it really is changing how things are done by defining that authority the way that I see throughout this document. And then the other thing is why we are trying to be more narrow about what the uses of, of this reclaimed water is.
Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Damott, for your question. This is, this is a change to the way these rules are enacted and that moves it from specifically my authority in the ordinance to the Public Works Director, which I'm recommending to you because I think that's where the expertise in the organization lies and it's actually more, more forthcoming with the public as to how those rules are created. And you also asked a very specific question, but maybe to re, to go over a bit more of, of why Public Works and maybe even the Attorney's Office, if they want to weigh in on this, have recommended to me that we make this change. I'll call on Stephen Gate, who's acting Public Works Utilities Director this week, or Mr. Kirschbaum is out, and then Counselor, our Council, Dave Frankel, if you have anything to add to that. And, and Stephen, when you come in, you might get that very specific question that Councilmember Damott had. Can thank you for the question. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Counselor Damott. With regards to the authority for the Public Works and Utilities Director, I think that David Frankel and Matt Munch can probably give you a better logic behind that, but from our perspective in operations and managing our utility, we, we deal a lot with ever-changing environmental or regulatory mandates and having the ability to move quickly and enact those changes to keep us compliant with those regulations is very, very helpful for us in operating the, the utility. We had a case back when we did our backflow prevention and cross-condition control. We had to make some modifications based off of state regulations and it took us, you know, going through council and the city manager's office, an exorbitant amount of time to get those modifications made. And that's why we, we created the service rules to begin with. Now, these specific service rules, sir, deal with the reclaimed water system. And to your specific question with regards to the fire protection, commercial and those other, those, those uses are not authorized by the state for reclaimed water, and that's why they're called out to not be included. Those are covered under our water, that domestic water connections, our water connections. Did that answer your question?
It, it does. It doesn't ease my concern, but it answers the question. So I guess with that, I, I think I actually will be voting either to table this so that we can have further discussion in a study session, or I'm going to have to vote no. So I would ask to amend to table this in, in order for us to have a more distinct, detailed study session to go through these changes because they're a lot more substantial than I was prepared for.
If I may, this is Assistant City Attorney Matthew Munch. I know there was a request to get a sort of a legal input on this question. Counselor Damott, if you'd like my input.
Sure, that'd be great.
One of the things you pointed out was that you've seen the, the same change over and over again, several different locations in this ordinance, several different red lines, which make the, you'll see that it's the exact same wording, defining the utility rules and giving the authority to the Director of Public Works and Utility. The reason that identical language appears three separate times is, of course, we are amending both the water, wastewater and reclaimed water definitions to have the exact same definition of utility service rules. What this allows, though it's a little bit more work on the front end and causes a kind of a messier, more What this allows, though it's a little bit more work on the front end and causes a kind of a messier, more red-lined ordinance, it allows the Public Works Director to create one single document that is the utility service rules that is referenced in all of these places in the code. And therefore, the citizens, uh, developers, anybody who is affected by the utility service rules only has to go to one place to get the one answer on the issue, which is the one utility service rules published by, uh, Director of Public Works and Utilities that, where they can find everything they need. So by making the change three different places and making the delegation in those three different places, we're actually saving complexity on the back end, uh, a little bit more work here, apart from that definition. Yes, sir.
Uh, I I was just gonna say, that makes sense to me from a legal standpoint, if you were going to change it. Uh, my uncomfortability is with the actual change of authority. So that's, uh, more my concern at this point, but I do appreciate the input. It does make sense for us to make it as streamlined as possible when we're making these changes. And I always appreciate that you guys do that to make our code more simple. Uh, I just simply don't, don't know that I agree with the change of authority to to allow that down downstream, uh, from from council and the City Manager to the Public Works Director. So, um, I I would need more time to think about that if I was to approve that, and I would need a lot more discussion about how we came to that than we probably could get to tonight. Um, so that's why I would either ask that we table it and come back with a study session or or I will have to vote no. So, but I appreciate that explanation.
Ms. Smith, let's get your. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just wanted, uh, Counselor Demott had any other questions that he wanted legal to address before I put myself back on view.
Nope, thank you, Mr. Munch. I appreciate your your input.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Smith, let's get your questions on the record, please.
Thank you. Uh, you know, some of my questions, uh, fall, just listening to Counselor Demott's, um, questions fall in line. Mine is who does a liability fall to, um, if we change that direction as far as, uh, who will be responsible for those decisions? Um, that was, that was two of my questions. Um, wouldn't we want Mr. Tripp to execute these decisions and then who does a liability fall to? Um, in this, would it be City of Westminster or would it be, um, CMO or the City Manager?
Mr. Tripp.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that one to, that's a interpretation of maybe something that could be litigated here. I'll ask Dave to sign on, but while while I'm up, um, Counselor Smith, thanks for the question and back to Counselor Demott's question. Um, Counselor Demott suggested a study session to talk further about that. You know, we don't have any objection to that. If you'd like to, um, schedule a study session, um, it's not uncommon for us to put items on the agenda and, uh, for there to be maybe be confusion as you read it or questions that you you want to have answered and and we're certainly willing to answer those. Sometimes we can get those questions ahead of time and provide those. Other times they're more complicated and may take a conversation. Um, we try to leave enough time in the schedule to do that. I've checked with, um, Deputy Andrews and, uh, and Dave Frankel. Um, I don't think there's any reason why we couldn't schedule a study session. So I'm not suggesting that right now. That's up to council, but if you'd like to, if you'd like us to do that, I just don't, we, as a staff, we don't want to be in the way of that. Uh, Dave Frankel, would you maybe, would you address Counselor Smith's question, please?
Absolutely, Don. Uh, Dave Frankel, City Attorney, and, um, Mr. Munch is standing by as well, but in, you know, my initial reaction to your question is for liability for decisions. Obviously pursuant to the charter, um, city employees report to the City Manager. So to the extent that promulgating, um, service rules is done by the city, it's it's essentially a city action. I don't honestly foresee liability by Public Works Director promulgating service rules, but any such rules would certainly be actions of the city and done pursuant to the municipal code. So we would defend any challenges, uh, that were received regarding those rules.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess one of my biggest hangups, um, here is that within the last, uh, few months, uh, we've seen that, um, that public health officials, um, are creating orders and and making decisions. Um, and so it was mentioned, um, the CDPG was mentioned in, uh, part of the redline documents and part of my hesitation um, is having someone make decisions that, um, isn't appointed by council. Um, and so that is, um, partly where I have a hangup as far as moving forward with changing the roles and responsibilities of that. Um, and then just in its entirety, um, I think that I would like an opportunity to discuss a little bit more about what that looks like, um, for us as a city to to change those roles. If we have an opportunity to table this, I would, I would appreciate it, um, to talk further into those details.
All right, let me finish getting the rest of the questions before we take up that motion. So there are other questions other councilmembers have. We can get those on the record so that if we have to go to a study session, staff will be prepared to answer those. Ms. Sykes, let's have your questions.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Um, so my understanding, if I heard Mr. Gay correctly and if I understood both, um, from our packet, um, in in addition to previous conversations, one of the benefits of doing this is to allow us to act more nimbly as different bodies that regulate the city, um, with our water, um, treatment, our wastewater treatment and our, um, or gray water, um, or reclaimed water, rather. Sorry, there's a little lightning storm right outside. Um, I don't know if you could hear that thunder. Um, the the goal is as those change, the city doesn't get to decide whether or not we comply with that. We are, that's the standard we have to meet. And so this would allow the Public Works Director to modify our rules to match what we are required to to provide in in certain treatment levels. Is that correct? Is that, is that the goal of this?
Mr. Gay, can you respond?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Counselor Sykes, you're absolutely correct. That is the the intent of the service rules.
And can you remind me, I believe, and perhaps I'm incorrect, that there are substantial fines and penalties if we were to not meet these standards, including like federal prosecution of the operators of our wastewater treatment plants. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct as well.
So to me, this doesn't feel like a council policy decision, right? Our policy, uh, goals are to protect public health and safety and want to make sure that we're doing, providing high-quality drinking water, um, that we're responsible with our treatment of our wastewater, um, you know, and and meeting the standards of our reclaimed water. Um, and and I think we also have a policy goal of not wanting to be too, um, uh, difficult to work with, right? Like, we want to be reasonable, um, with the community that interfaces with us. But to me, this doesn't feel like a policy. This seems more like an operational issue. Um, so I, you know, I I am comfortable moving forward, um, with that rationale. Um, I'd be happy to hear from my colleagues how they see this as more of a policy issue that that is more appropriate to come to council. Um, but I I also want to clarify one thing. This would not give the Public Works Director the ability to raise rates, tap fees, um, or anything like that without coming to council. We would still retain that policy discretion. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Counselor Sykes, that is correct. And, uh, we also have language in the ordinance that or the the memo that directs us to update council when those service rules and regulations are modified to keep them, keep you aware of the changes and the reasons for those changes.
Thank you.
Uh, this is, this is Matthew Munch again. Um, I just want to reiterate that is correct. Um, there the Public Works Director would not have the ability to set or modify the rates. That is, uh, the sole issue of City Council. Um, certainly we understand everybody's concerns about that. With regards to a a study session, as Mr. Tripp said, that's certainly a possibility. We did address some of the issues around the timing of this in last week's executive session. And if, uh, there's more information requested about that, uh, we can go into executive session again tonight to address those timing issues if, uh, council wished to.
Thank you.
Are there other councilmembers who want to, uh, put questions on the table before I start a second round? Mr. Demott, you have additional comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I think really Counselor Sykes hits the nail on the head with my concern when you talk about something that is so important that there are federal ramifications. There are serious ramifications for this going wrong is why I think that I would prefer that that be funneled to the City Manager and to the council. That is, uh, such an important, um, thing to have the safety of our our water for our residents that they have entrusted us to to run their city and make sure that the City Manager is operating a a good run organization. That that's absolutely my concern. So, um, you know, the reiteration of of what we already know is always, uh, welcome. However, it just, uh, solidifies my concern with this and why I can't support it. Um, but I was willing to do a study session so that you could try, we could talk through it a little bit better and try to understand, um, operationally how this works. I mean, I understand in 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 practice of what you're saying. I just am uncomfortable with delegating that authority downstream.
Other comments from council? Before we check to see if there is a desire by a majority of council to table this. One of the things I would ask you to think about is we give this authority to the City Manager and he in turn delegates to those who have the expertise as he's indicated. I don't believe that there's anything that's proposed in this event for tonight that justifies another, another session on this. We've had, uh, one piece about why we're doing some of this recently on, as of last Monday night. We are relying on people who have the expertise of knowing when and where to do this, and I think that's what the City Manager is saying. He's proposing, along with the City Attorney's Office, is to get this in the hands of those who are most expertise. None of us on council have the expertise in the water area that they do. And in a timely manner, sometimes they're going to have to react to to things that happen in the system without waiting on coming back to City Council somewhat, uh, as Ms. Sykes was pointing out. So I'm not sure why this is such an issue tonight, but in either case, we've had a a two request to consider tabling this motion and coming back to a study session. So first of all, I will ask the city clerk to take a roll call on a proposal to take this to a future study session, but by first would be to table this motion or this action for tonight to bring back to a study session. So Ms. Parker, my question is, should this item be tabled? And if a majority of council says we'll table it, then we'll set up a study session night for a later night.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, quick point of order. There was a request to amend the original motion. Uh, the only way we can move forward with a second vote is if the maker and the second maker of the original motion both accept the amendment to table.
Okay.
And I have that as Counselor Seymour was the maker of the motion and Counselor Scully seconded the motion.
That's what I have also. So, Mr. Seymour, would you accept an amendment to your motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If if I amend that motion, would that then automatically take it to study session or if we withdraw the motion, then we could have the separate vote on tabling?
The only thing that you would be accepting, Mr. Seymour, was the request to amend to have this table for tonight.
Hey, I would accept that request then.
All right, Ms. Scully.
I do not.
Therefore, the motion dies, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we do not have a motion at this time to table this. And the motion that is before us is to approve item ten A. And that requires a roll call vote. Ms. Parker.
Counselor Demott.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Can you please repeat, Counselor Demott?
No.
Demott votes no. Mayor Protem cites.
Yes.
Cites votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
No.
Smith votes no. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Vols votes yes. And Mayor Atchison.
Yes, and the motion carries on a five-two vote. Moving on to the next item. Sure, I've tried to make sure who's up next. Ms. Sykes, I believe you're up next on item ten B, Resolution twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution number twenty-nine, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Foothills Regional Housing in substantially the same form as presented regarding the Westy Rise Above Housing Assistance Grant Program developed in response to the economic impacts associated with COVID nineteen.
Mr. Vols.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution number twenty-nine. Is there any comments or questions from council? Ms. Sykes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I just want to give, um, a wholehearted thank you to our staff, um, and to Jefferson County, um, and for all parties, um, in helping us come up, um, with a really substantial way to our, to assist our residents who have faced, um, economic impacts, um, due to COVID nineteen. Um, we know how important housing stability is on individuals, on families, on our seniors. Um, and we really do feel this program, um, it's going to make a meaningful impact, um, as people try to navigate the challenges, um, from this pandemic. So thank you.
Mr. Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I also want to, uh, reiterate and also thank our staff for their work on putting this together. You know, early in the pandemic, we had talked about helping businesses, which was very important, and we, all of us supported that. It's very, uh, unanimous support. And we also said, can we do something for folks who may be having a housing crisis due to, you know, this pandemic? So staff worked on this. This is a great solution. I thank them for their work on this. We did something similar for Adams County residents, uh, at the end of July. So now we're coming back and this is Jefferson, twenty. I just want to, our residents in Jefferson County, I should say. I just want to say, I, in reading the packet, um, it mentions Foothills Regional Housing is the administrator. There's a, there's just one line in there where it also says maker housing partners might be. It is actually the Jefferson County Foothills Regional Housing. So I just want to make that, uh, just make that clear. We'll be the administrator of this, uh, program, but I thank staff for bringing this forward. Uh, this is good work. It helps our residents and, uh, it's a very important effort. So thank you for that. And I plan to support this tonight.
Okay, Ms. Scully, if you would, please.
I don't know that I could say any more than my, um, fellow counselors have, so I will just ditto. Thank you, staff. You did a really wonderful job on this. Thank you very much.
Other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is item ten B, Resolution number twenty-nine for roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem cites.
Yes.
Cites votes yes. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully.
Yeah.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Vols votes yes. Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Demott votes yes.
Hey, thank you, council. Uh, item ten B, adoption of Resolution twenty-nine passes on a unanimous vote. Moving to the next item, this is item ten C, executed contract with the senior hub. And Ms. Sykes, I've got you and then Ms. Smith.
As much as I'd love to make the motion, I think, uh, Counselor Scully beat me to it.
Okay.
I think I'm just a second.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Scully, if you would, then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Dave Frankel. If I could, Ms. Scully, Counselor Scully, just one request I would make. If the motion you are making is to approve, excuse me, 10C, there is one typographical error that's come to my attention that I would ask if you could incorporate that into your motion, just to correct that one typographical error.
Yes, sir. I'm looking at it. I'm trying to find it.
Mr. Frankel, you know where the typographical error is that she can appoint to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's at paragraph 2B of the agreement with the senior hub. And 2B references 300 food insecure families per week. And it's my understanding, having spoken to Mr. Moss, that should say 600 instead of 300 food insecure families per week. That would be the correction I would ask be incorporated into the motion.
Okay, let's see if I can do this. All right, so, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the Senior Hub Inc. regarding the Westy Rise Food Security Program developed in response to the economic and social impacts associated with COVID-19 in substantially the same form as presented with the amendment of 600 food insecure families being impacted.
All right, Ms. Sykes?
Second.
All right, okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments in regards to this amended motion? Okay, seeing no comments. Ms. Parker, we're on item 10C. If you would do a roll call vote, please.
Certainly. Councillor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Councillor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Councillor Smith? Smith votes yes. Councillor Bowles?
Yes.
Bowles votes yes. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Councillor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor pro tem sites?
Yes.
And sites votes yes.
The motion for item 10C carries on a unanimous vote. Next item up is item 10D, is a library materials purchase. Ms. Smith, would you like to do that one?
Yes, sir. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will be best served by utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials by technical services, increasing the authorized expenditure amount from 150,000 to an amount not to exceed 250,000 for 2020 from overdrive.
Mr. Bowles?
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second for item 10D. Are there any comments or questions from council? Mr. Demott?
Just curious if we could have somebody from Parks, Rec and Library explain a little bit more about what this increase is, because that's a substantial amount of money. And I'm trying to understand why this needs to happen right now in the economic state that we're in.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes, councillor Demott, thank you. I'll ask Jason Gink to address that. He's the director of Parks Recreation Libraries.
Thank you, councillor Demott, for the question. I do apologize for the delay and having some storm issues over here, but thank you, councillor Demott, for the question. Uh, and the question was about explaining the reason for the purchase at this point in time. It's, it's a shift in the types of materials we're purchasing in libraries due to the significant increase in the demand for e-materials. Uh, staff actually continue to track a rate of 30 to 40% increases recent as this week in the demand of those materials. So we're shifting the purchase of our, of our, of our, of our books and other types of materials to e-materials to represent patron demand. Uh, it, it is within the existing resources that the libraries has budgeted uh, for the allocation of bringing materials to the community.
So this doesn't overall impact what, what would have went out anyway, as far as costs?
Uh, councillor, Jason Gink again, Director of Parks Recreation Libraries. The answer is no. We are modifying the cost of, uh, towards the purchase of more e-materials versus the book and, and hard materials, uh, mostly because of, uh, again, to, to, to match the patron demand of the types of materials that they're using. We've seen an increase due to COVID, but we've also seen an increase overall in that type of material. So, no, we're not asking to increase the overall budget. We're asking to shift that, purchasing more towards e-materials.
Okay, great. Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Bowles?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask if it's possible, I noticed in the memorandum about this item, it, uh, it's coming out of the general fund, Parks and Rec, what in libraries? Is there a possibility, I, I sent this note along earlier and I think I already know the answer, but is there a possibility for this to be CARES Act, you know, the federal funding that we receive for, for COVID? Because a lot of the write-up in the memorandum seems like it indicated that this uptick in use is a lot of COVID-related kind of uses. So, and people are at home now, people are online more often, they have time to do this kind of thing. So we have that increase in use. Is there any way to transfer this instead of using general fund monies, uh, that we would use CARES Act federal money to kind of backfill this, since it was, I assume, unexpected and unbudgeted ahead of time? Thank you.
Councillor Bowles, thank you for the question. Uh, and thanks for asking that earlier today. I've had Larry Dorr, our CFO, researching that. I'm not sure Larry's ready to answer that, but I think it's a fair question. Um, as people who are listening to the telecast may want to understand, uh, the two counties that we are, we have, that we're jurisdiction with, Adams and Jefferson, have provided us a little over $10 million in CARES fund from the federal government that can be used for expenses related to COVID-19. And I think the question you asked is, um, if it, since this is connected, in fact, and spinning away from hardcover copy expenditures to electronic expenditures, would those expenditures be eligible? So Larry, if you're able to answer that tonight, please do so. If not, we're still researching that. Um, we'll sure work on that. I'd have an answer later on when we provide the follow-up on the COVID expenditures. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Once again, Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager. I appreciate the question, Mr. Bowles. Absolutely, we do want to take a look at the eligibility of the spending. I would say that first blush, this looks to fit the model for CARES, but we want to be very cautious about that. Also, we've done our planning in the area of social recovery. Uh, but we know that as we continue through, uh, these processes and this, and the CARES implementation, that we believe that we'll have some funds that will be available. Certain projects may come in a little bit under budget, uh, things like our hazard pay program and PPE purchases and others. And so we'll, we'll probably be revising that budget as we go along. But first and foremost, we have this within our existing appropriations within Parks Recreation and Libraries. So we have those appropriations available. We know that we want to bring these services to the Westminster community. Uh, and we do need council's approval, obviously, given the size of the expenditure. But, uh, we will have the opportunity to continue to really thoughtfully look at the eligibility for spending under CARES and then look at our available funds within CARES. And if we can make that a shift at some time in the future, then we'll report that back to council and, and hopefully take up that opportunity. But I couldn't give you a definite answer tonight, but we'll continue to have that in our to-dos and evaluation as we go forward under CARES. So, again, thank you for the question and, uh, we will, uh, continue to analyze that and report back.
All right, very good. Well, thank you, everyone, for those answers. And I think whenever we can, we're going to have a really financial world of hurt coming up. I, I believe our budget's going to be very tight. Whenever we can transfer those monies, I think we need to do it. And I'm sure and absolutely certain you're doing that and you're on top of that. So thank you for those answers. I appreciate that.
Ms. Scully, you had a comment?
I actually have a follow-up to councillor Bowles's question. So if we were to approve this tonight, do we have opportunities later? If we discover that this could be CARES Act funding use, do we, do we have to come back and revote on this? Or can we vote on it and then change where the funds come from later? Is, how is that, is that acceptable? Or do we need to perhaps table this until we can get clarity on that question?
Mr. Bowles?
Oh yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillor Scully. Now, uh, we would want or suggest that the council, uh, adopt this resolution so that the expenditures could be made right away and the services implemented. Again, uh, the funds are already appropriated, but rather the size of, of the dispersment needs to be approved. Then subsequently in the future, should we come to the conclusion that it's an opportunity to utilize CARES funds and it fits within, uh, the overall appropriations? And we have funds available, why we'll bring back a second action for the city council to approve? If that's an opportunity, uh, you utilize CARES funds as suggested and it fits within the overall. So, uh, step one, we want to get these services to the Westminster community. That's what's on the table here for tonight. And then we'll follow up with a second action in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dorr, just for a clarification, in most of these cases where we've got CARES dollars, we're spending dollars, then submitting those for reimbursement approvals through either Jefferson or Adams County. Is that still correct?
Oh, it's, well, we're receiving the funds in advance, Mayor. Uh, and we've received our two chunks of funding from the two different counties. And then we submit a report, uh, setting forth how those funds were spent. And then we can receive, uh, subsequent, uh, advances of funds in the future. So, uh, generally speaking, yes, we do need to report what's being spent. Uh, but we're being, uh, funded in advance. There's a reporting within our intergovernmental agreement. So, at the end of the day, we need to report all of our spending, uh, and as we are doing. Uh, and of course, uh, when we set forth certain projects and initiatives, as the city has done, uh, sometimes those spend, those, uh, projects are coming in on budget or a little bit below budget. Some of them, uh, one we have here tonight for your approval, um, that was, that just went, uh, before you. And so we'll continue to modify and adjust those as we go along. And should we have, um, available funding and fits within the criteria, both the federal and council's guiding principles, we'll bring those back and perhaps backfill this general fund spending that's already occurred. But in any event, this is within existing appropriations and just needs a spending limit authorization.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council on item 10D? Ms. Parker, this is item 10D. It's a roll call vote of you, please.
Councillor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Councillor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. Councillor Bowles?
Yes.
Bowles votes yes. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Councillor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor pro tem sites?
Yes.
Sites votes yes. And councillor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes.
Hey, thank you, council. Item 10D, the motion is carried on a unanimous vote, 7-0. Moving on to the next item, item E1, this is ratification of expenditure for Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. And Mr. Seymour, I think you're, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to ratify expenditures with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company for the replacement of existing crossing surfaces at Wasworth Boulevard in the amount of $68,872. And for the replacement of the 80th Avenue Crossing in the amount of $56,866 for a total ratification amount of $125,738.
Ms. Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remind everyone, this is a two-part, uh, program. So there will be a second motion required as well. Uh, any questions or comments on this one? And see if I can get back here. Ms. Scully, it looks like you may have had a question. And then, Mr. Seymour?
No, sir, I'm good for the evening. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Seymour, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I'm fine, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, going down the list, Mr. Bowles? Comment or question?
Uh, maybe both. I have a question. It looks to me like we have a proposal here, we're being asked to approve money where the estimate and what we actually being invoiced by the railroad company here, Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway Company, is 60% increase over what their initial estimate was just over two years ago. I guess my question would be, why do we know why the estimate was so low? And then what the actual cost was 60% more than what we were told it was going to cost for? And I should say, I understand the sole source. They use their own crews to work on these railroad crossings that cross our city streets. So I understand that there's train rerouting there. So I don't need the answers on sole source. I understand that they are the sole source and why they do it. It makes sense for efficiency and, but I don't understand the cost and why we had a 60% increase in what they told us, now what we're being asked to pay. And I don't, like, in the packet, it appeared that we're not getting any answers on why that's such an increase. Could someone tell me, uh, explain that to me, please?
Mr. Tripp, who would you like to defer this one to?
I'll, I'll take a, uh, an immediate shot at it and then ask Matthew Boko, our General Services Director, to follow up. Thank you, councillor, for the question and thanks earlier today for preparing me for this. Uh, you're absolutely correct. The Burlington Northern is doing this work on behalf of the city. These are, uh, to, to do improvements to two railroad crossings. And I think the community is, is and will appreciate a lot. Um, yet, having said that, um, you know, we rely on the estimates that they provide because they do this work. Um, and it's not unusual for those estimates to not be right on the, um, right on that number when those bills come back to us and we're responsible for those payments. Um, I can say with certainty that, you know, we, um, do look at, um, the costs and we look at, um, and ask them why these costs went up. But I will tell you that, uh, the costs are, maybe a way to put it is the costs are what they are based on their contracts. Um, I think these are probably difficult things to estimate depending upon, you know, when the construction is and what they get into when they actually do the construction. Um, so that's why we brought it forward to you as a recommendation. But, um, I don't think we're going to have a great answer as to exactly why and, and probably not be able to promise that this will never happen again. Uh, but I do think that, uh, these are worthwhile projects. And, uh, so we recommended approval of it. Uh, we have a very good relationship with Burlington Northern Railroad and we appreciate the work they do on behalf of our city. Mr. Boko, would you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Don. Um, I would, I have a lot to add myself, but Kurt Muelmeyer, the Street Operations Manager, is very familiar with this project. And Kurt has a few thoughts on why some of those increases did occur. And I will ask her to, uh, provide that information to Mr. Councillor Bowles. Kurt?
Thank you, Matthew, and, uh, thank you councillor Bowles for the question. Um, yes, just to reiterate, um, what Mr. Tripp said. Um, it, it's very hard to get, uh, answers from Burlington Northern as far as why these costs um, were in such excess of their estimate. I can only speculate at this point as far as the timing. You know, the, the estimates were prepared almost 20 months before the work was completed. And these contracts contain subcontracted work as well. And I, I don't believe the railroad has control over the subcontracted costs. And when I say subcontracted, I mean traffic control and asphalt restoration. And looking at their invoices, that's where the overrun has occurred, um, in the subcontracted costs and a little bit in the labor. Did that answer your question, councillor Bowles?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I guess my concern is, you know, I, I do really do believe what am I, one of the roles of a council member is to kind of watch the bottom line. And this really concerns me. I, I have to admit, I'm not really inclined to vote for this. I, I don't understand why we don't know, have any explanation at all. I mean, that's a, quite an increase from what we're kind of anticipating. And then if, if we had answers, I had a, a paragraph or bullet points in the, uh, in our memorandum that outlined why such an increase, what happened, maybe... that outlined why such an increase, what happened, maybe there's something they uncovered while they're, that they're apparently not responding to our requests to explain why it costs so much. And I, you know, that's hard for me to support. I don't know. I understand where you're coming from, and I heard City Manager Tripp. I understand that. I just don't know that I'm in a position to support this, the way this is moving forward without having some kind of a reason why we've got such an increase in the price of what we're being asked to pay. So I guess that's a question, and you answered it, and I guess that is my comment. So I guess I was right when I said I had questions and comments. I, I think because of the increase in the way this is being handed to us, I will not be voting for this tonight. So, thank you.
Mr. Frankel, I'm going to ask you, I know one of your staff members is on the call that has some, had some recent dealings where we've dealt with BNSF and Union Pacific both, where we were in belief that we had an agreement, and then all of a sudden we got a huge price hike with little or no explanation. In my experience, this is not uncommon in dealing with some of the railroads where we have no control over who they hire, what they price out. You have any dialogue you might want to add into that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. I don't know that Mr. Munch is still on the call, so I will field your question myself. And obviously, the maintenance of the crossings is something that BNSF wants to control itself. And I think the best available information we have, as Mr. Mulemeyer indicated, was where the overruns were occurring on this particular contract with the subcontractors. And that if the original estimate has come, you know, some 20 months old, I suspect that is what's driving the overrun. The older initial estimate plus BNSF subs relative to the asphalt and other ancillary work, I believe, part of the crossing maintenance. As far as options, if we want to resurface or facilitate the resurfacing of these crossings within our city, honestly don't know that there's any other way to accomplish that than by going through BNSF. So a long way of getting around to that potential bottom line for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Demott, you have a comment or a question?
No, I withdraw after Mr. Frankel's comments. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just want to say that it's, working with BNSF for 10 years in transportation, it's been incredibly difficult to work with them. And they've come back with increased costs. And so I can understand, while it's not, while I would like to see red lines and see where we're at with the dollars. It's incredibly difficult to, one, communicate and to work hand in hand on those red lines. And so just personally in my career, working with them, I understand the nuances here with this. And so, well, it's hard for me to vote yes for the increase in dollar amounts. I 100% understand the challenges it's been to, to continue a partnership and to work with BNSF. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, and I appreciate Mr. Frankel's comment that we really don't have a lot of options to who to join in with this because this work is being done on their property by them. And if it's something that we want to have done around railroad crossings, we don't have another option to go to. Any other comments or questions from council on item E1?
Mayor, I really appreciate and respect Counselor Vols' concern about this. And it is a bit embarrassing to bring something like this forward, frankly, that we can't provide better answers to you. The one thing I would say that the taxpayer needs to know, and I want you to know too, is that, you know, we do our diligence in terms of verifying that these are actually expenses that they had with contractors or for materials of work that they do. So I can provide certainty to you that we, we paid for something, we paid for work that was actually done. And on that basis, we made a recommendation to put this on the agenda and would ask for your approval. But I do, I do respect the Council Vols.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. If there are another comments, I see nothing in the queue. Ms. Parker, this is item 10E1 for a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Smith votes yes. I believe that was a yes, Counselor Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Smith votes yes. Counselor Vols?
No.
Vols votes no. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
No.
Demott votes no. Mayor Protem sites?
Yes.
Sites votes yes. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Scully votes yes.
Okay, the motion is carried on a 5-2 vote. Mr. Seymour, would you carry the second part of that, item 10E2, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the additional amount of $53,134 above the projected cost estimate provided by Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company for work at the 80th Avenue site for a total anticipated project cost of $110,000.
Ms. Smith?
Second.
If you have a motion and a second, is any comments or questions? I am seeing no comments or questions. Ms. Parker, we're on 10E2, please. Roll call.
Counselor Vols?
No.
Vols votes no. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
No.
Demott votes no. Mayor Protem sites?
Yes.
Sites votes yes. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes.
Motion carries on a 5-2 vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item 10F. This is a contract, negotiating, excuse me, contract with Kennedy Jinks Consultants. And, Mr. Seymour, it looks like you're up in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will be best served by utilizing negotiated contract with Kennedy Jinks Consultants, Inc. to provide final design and construction engineering services for the Mead Circle Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $137,179 and authorize a contingency of $13,718 for a total of $150,897. The amendment increases the total authorized expenditures with this consultant from the previously approved amount of $20,926 to $171,823, including contingency.
Ms. Sites?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10F. Are there comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, item 10F is a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Atchison votes yes. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Demott votes yes. Mayor Protem sites?
Yes.
Sites votes yes. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Seymour votes yes. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Scully votes yes. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Smith votes yes. And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Vols votes yes.
Thank you, Council. Item 10F is carried on a unanimous vote. Moving to the last business item on the agenda for tonight, we're moving on to item 10G. This is a contract amendment with White and Smith. And 10G, Mr. Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager execute an amended contract with White and Smith LLC for the Harris Park task identified within code forward contract. I mean, $34,230 to the task amount of $62,655 for total authorized expenditure not to exceed $96,885 for the Harris Park task. Thus bringing the total code forward contract total to an amount not to exceed $499,761. Thank you.
You did mean $499,000.
Yes, I did, actually. Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure. Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Demott, you have a question or comment on item 10G?
A little bit of both. First question I have for staff is, how does this play in, or how important is this to the comprehensive land use plan change?
Thanks, Counselor Demott. Dave Downing is on the call tonight on our meeting and is going to be handling, between him and his staff, questions on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Steve Downing. Actually, since Andrew Spurgeon is listening in and he's very familiar with the Harris Park Plan and is actually the staff lead on the comprehensive plan, I think it'd be best to have him answer your question.
All right, Mr. Spurgeon, if you would, please.
This is Andrew. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner, Community Development. I appreciate the question. The comprehensive plan is a citywide document focusing on land use as well as housing, health, community health, our neighborhoods, and our utilities and resources. This Harris Park Plan is very specific to that smaller area. And in fact, it's probably more closely tied to the work we're doing with Code Forward and the Development Code, where we're updating our standards for development citywide. This area is unique and it has straight zoning as opposed to the PUD development. And it's been expressed to staff that the current mix of zoning types and the lack of a vision for the area is an impediment to development or investment in that area. So this really builds on the Code Forward work to help articulate a more specific vision for this area. So it's a companion to the comprehensive plan, but it doesn't substitute for that work.
Great, thank you. Couple of comments, and, you know, I've done a considerable amount of reaching out to the community in the historic part of the city as well as I've had a considerable amount of citizens who have reached out to me on this item. I had shared when we went through the study session, I was not supportive of us adding additional money into this as what I see as a potential another plan with no real ability or teeth to make sure it happens. But I want to share some of the feedback that I've got from some of the constituents in the historic part of the city. From what I talked to some of the different folks in the historic part of Westminster was, they didn't feel that this plan really reflected what the people wanted, nor did, you know, a lot of them in a lot of cases didn't feel like they needed change that was driven by the City Hall. There was a feeling that this was just another edict from City Hall on what planners and city management wanted to someday see in the historic part of town. And I think that those, those feelings are important to take into consideration when we do something like this. So I just can't support this, knowing that a lot of the folks that I talked to that I know are community leaders in the historic part of town just are very concerned about this and don't seem to be on board with it. The other thing that, you know, I've been in a lot of these meetings, and I would say some of the most well-attended meetings in the beginning of this, when we had a little bit different makeup on council, I saw a lot of people who weren't from that part of town. And that was another thing that I heard from some of the residents down there when we were doing an exercise and looking at the different parts of town and saying, you know, cut and pasting different things of what we'd like to see in different places. Those were people's properties that we were assigning what, what things we would like to see down there. And so I really don't think that this matches up with the, the will of the people in the historic part of town. So therefore, I don't think this expenditure is what we should be spending money on right now, and I will be voting no.
Mr. Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask maybe Mr. Spurgeon this. This task that we're adding, so we're admitting this contract by about $34,000, but it is my understanding and everything I've read, and I think the details you provided previously, that this task is being requested by a number of people that are either on the focus group or have been involved in these meetings throughout. Is that true? And what I mean by that, not coming from, directly from city staff, not coming from the consultant in any way. It's basically folks in, they're involved in the process, want to see this task added to make it a better plan. Is that true?
This is Andrew. The reason the costs have increased is because of requests from the community, as you suggest, relative to both a geographic expansion and a desire for different types of graphics that are outside of the capability of staff and additional meetings. And we did feel the need to be responsive to that and continue with this process. So that is why there is additional money requested to be added to this contract.
Okay, that's a good answer. Thank you for that. And like Counselor Demott, I've, I've heard those same concerns from people, so I respect that. And I think he raises really good points. I've heard that. But I've also received comments from several people from that, that area of our city who think it's a good investment. So I've kind of heard both sides of it, and I probably lean more now towards it, it's a good investment. I've heard from several people that said, well, the city is invested in the new downtown and other areas. What about Harris Park? You know, we, we need some, we deserve it. We need some investment there as well. I think this is a step in that direction, so I would, tonight, I'm supporting this. I was originally like Counselor Demott and others on council. I, you know, I voted to kind of table it. Let's take a look. I think in that last meeting, Mr. Downing, Mr. Spurgeon, and others, I think there was a whole group, all team, came through with quite a number of details that I think convinced me that it was a good investment. I, you know, I, this is a time where we need to look at every dollar, every penny spent by the city. And I, I'm going to support this tonight because I think there was a really strong case that this came from residents in that community and that they wanted this task added and additional meetings were added. And through all of that, I think this is a really good chance for us to invest in our historic South Side, our Harris Park community. And I look forward to voting yes on this. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I'm grateful that we were able to have the opportunity to table it as I was able to participate as a resident and someone who was running for council as a candidate. But the, I think, being on council now and hearing the in-depth parts of this and understanding the ins and outs has really, really honed in on the decision tonight. My decision remains as a no. In our, in our study session, having a great presentation with lots of information, I just, I still can't get there for the extra cost of it. I really believe that we can do a lot with what we have, what we have already accomplished with this contract. I'd liked, I'd like us to see what we can, how far we can go with its current state. But I, even reading further into this, this past week, I can't, I can't vote yes on it. I have also heard a few people from historic Westminster and their concerns on it. Overall, again, what Counselor Vols said, it's, it's a comment of investing more and taking a deeper dive into that. I think we have a lot of projects that we could be working on in that area. And this, this doesn't. working on in that area. And this, this doesn't seem to be throwing more money at it. I can't do it. So my vote is going to be a no, continue no tonight.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I have also heard from a great many residents and also participated in some of the early forums. And I, I, in the initial vote, was leaning as a no. But I believe Mayor, it was Mayor Protem Sights that said something that was relevant as far as finishing the, bringing the plan to fruition, finishing the plan. And at that point, then we can evaluate, have the residents of Harris Park evaluate the plan and the availability to make changes for the positive for the entire neighborhood. The neighborhood has had many plans thrust upon them. I believe there's been a substantial amount of outreach in this case. But I made that decision on our first vote to vote in favor, and I am again going to vote in favor of this tonight so that we can complete this plan and deliver it to the residents so that they can see where it stands from here. Thank you.
Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spurgeon's or Mr. Downing, it is my understanding that if we vote this, if we don't vote for this increase tonight, the project will go away and will basically be back at ground zero, trying to redo this after COVID. Is that correct?
This, this Dave Downing. If we, if the additional payment for the consultant fails tonight, well, you know, we'll try our, we'll probably have to put the plan on hold for a while. I, I am uncertain. In fact, I'm doubtful that we have staff resources to, to do it justice. What the, what we have heard from the residents is a certain quality and type of, of graphic. And I'm dubious that we can do that ourselves. So I think my recommendation would be to put the plan on hold if we cannot continue with the consultant at this time.
So I, I too have been a part of the forums and have spoken to many people in our historic Westminster area. My understanding is, is that this is, we are expanding the area that we are planning to include in the, in some of the revitalization. And, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I, I don't, I think we've had so many plans and we have just not followed through, or, or we've done just this, where we've gotten right up to the finish line, and then we have said, no, not yet. And, and I just feel like the, the people in this area, our residents in this area are ready for this. They have spoken, they have attended these forums, they have used their voice. I think we, we owe it to them to go ahead and approve this increase so that we can, we can finish this project the way we need to. So I will be in favor of this tonight.
Ms. Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to my colleagues. I think this has been a really good discussion. I am also going to vote in favor tonight to support the completion of the Harris Park plan and for the additional monies. And I have a few reasons for that. When we ask our community for their input and they invest time, and in this case, it was multiple evenings, kind of visioning their community, their neighborhood, what ideally they'd like to see happen there. And we have the opportunity to remove some barriers that our current plan puts on investment in that community. I think that's a good thing. And I think we need to honor the time and the thought that our residents put into this. You know, the fact that the, the expansion is due to residents saying, hey, you guys got the boundaries wrong. For this to be meaningful, we need to expand them. And we want to have clear graphics explaining to the investment community exactly what we mean by this. That is consistent with the amount of professionalism and clarity that we provide in our other plans in the city. And I don't think we should invest less or try to do some home spun approach in, in this portion of our city, which I think is an undervalued asset often. I think, I believe in the enthusiasm that I saw in the rooms talking about this with the members of the community. I, I think that there is some reluctance and some reticence that is maybe from this visioning fatigue, having gone through exercises where, you know, it fits and starts and the, the goal pitters out. And I don't want to be part of that legacy. I want to finish what we started and finish our commitment. We put in, it was important to former Mayor Protem Alberto Garcia, myself, former members of council, to show that this portion of our town is important and that we wanted to invest in it. And this plan was, was an extension of that communication. And so I'm, I'm excited to see it to fruition. I thank my colleagues who are joining me in favor of this tonight. And I thank the neighbors for spending the time, their time to believe in community and to work for something good. So I, very long-winded, but I am going to be voting yes.
Are there other comments from council? Seeing no other comments, Ms. Parker, this is item ten G for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Demott?
No.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Item ten G carries on a vote of five-two. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business portion of the event for tonight. The next item up is going to be for a citywide update on the COVID nineteen. At this time, I'm going to call a short recess, give everybody a chance to take a short bio break. By my clock here on the computer is eight-thirty-six. I'd ask you to be back if you can, no later than eight-forty, and we will reconvene at that time. All right, Ms. Parker, can you confirm the council's return, please?
Certainly. Mayor Atchison?
Yep.
Counselor Demott? Mayor Protem Sights?
I am here.
Counselor Seymour? Counselor Scully? Here. Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Vols?
Here.
And I'll try Counselor Demott again.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour?
Here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like we're all back. Mr. Trip, we're going to turn to you and your team for any COVID updates. And before I turn it over to you, let me get one piece here. Okay. As I mentioned this morning on the call that we had with the Westminster Chamber, I didn't have all the details, but some of those details are now available. We talked about the fact that we're continuing testing at the MAC for our uninsured and homeless groups, where that's going to continue. But the one we announced this morning was the new one that the state had set up, that we are now having a full-blown test facility similar to what was done at the Pepsi Center. It was had two other sites that have been initiated effective this morning, one here in the Westminster area, specifically at the Water World parking lot. The other one was in Peabody, and a third is, I believe, is coming up in the Fort Collins area. The information we did not have this morning was the hours of operation. That facility will be open daily from eight to four through September with the possibility of an extension based upon community needs. And according to the release we have through the state is that this is set up to taste test up to twenty-five-hundred people a day. And the anticipation is that there will be no more than three days elapsed between the time you get your test and you get your results back. And that, again, that site opened up this morning, and I know that the governor was over at the opening of the site along with one of our commissioners this morning. So again, that now gives us a second site here in the immediate area of Westminster to get testing. That testing site is also a no-cost site. Visitors do not need an identification card, a social security number, or insurance to get tested at the site at the Water World facility. So this is a lot more convenient for some of the people up on the north end, and it's open, and we hope that you'll take advantage of it. Other than that, Mr. Trip, who would you like to come up next?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the weekly COVID nineteen report that we've been doing dating back to late March at council's request to keep you informed as to developments week to week with COVID. We have four areas we're going to cover tonight and three speakers. These are all relatively short presentations. Sarah Borgers will start with a case data update that we do weekly. Sarah is serving as Acting Public Works and Utilities Director this week. She'll be followed by Larry Dorr and John Hall that will do a budget update, long-term recovery, and cares update. Thank you.
I guess. So thank you, Mr. Trip, Mayor and City Council. As Dawn mentioned, my name is Sarah Borgers, and I'm a manager in Public Works and Utilities. And today I'm sitting in for Director Kirschbaum. I'll be sharing the same four updated slides that Director Kirschbaum has presented in previous weeks. So this should all look familiar to you, just a different voice this week. I'm also happy to be sharing just a little bit of cautiously positive news with some caveats. So if we could see the next slide, please. Last week, if you recall, there was a bit of drop in the number of cases. And at the time, there wasn't enough data to identify that there was a clear downward trend. We didn't know if it was a blip or if it was a trend. And there was also a comment by Dr. Johnson last week that he had expressed some caution with the data as test results have been backlog. But this week, the state, Jefferson, and Adams County all are showing decreases in the number of reported cases. At this point, there does appear to be the start of a downward trend, which is a bit of positive news for us. So the graph you're looking at here is from the CPHG's website. It's updated through August eighth, and it's a three-day moving average of reported cases statewide. As you can see, we reached a peak of around seven hundred in the second half of July, and this past week seemed to be around four hundred or so. Next slide, please. So this is Jefferson County data reporting through August seventh, excuse me, August seventh. The dark green line is the three, same three-day moving average for Jefferson County. And this data shows a similar peak in the second half of July with a downward trend over the last couple of weeks. Next slide, please. So this graph is for Adams County's three-day rolling average. It's reporting through August ninth. And this has been mentioned previously, Adams County's website only shows about a month's worth of back data in this graphic, but it does show a similar peak in the second half of July, which has been decreasing for the last couple of weeks. Next slide, please. So this graph was more recently added within the last week or so. And this one is a bit bit changed from the one that you saw last week. The graphic last week showed a summarized weekly data. The state's now showing this information in that same three-day moving average that the other graphs are shown in. So it's the same data, just essentially a finer timescale. So walking through this graphic briefly, the tan and teal bars correlate with the left-hand axis and show the number of tests performed. And that red line is correlated with the right-hand axis and shows the percent positive of those tests performed. So those percent positives had been increasing slightly, beginning in early June and to July. Look, does look like it's leveled off somewhat and perhaps maybe tapering off a bit. We'll keep a close eye on that as well. So Matt, if you could switch back to slide two briefly. This is certainly positive indicators here that lead us to believe we are headed in the right direction. But we do have a bit to go. If you could go one more back, that would be awesome, Matt. With the state data. Thank you. The data is showing peaks and valleys, sort of trends. And so we remain The data is showing peaks and valleys, sort of trends, and so we remain cautious of reopening additional facilities prematurely. Staff continues to monitor the data and are encouraged by the downward trends. And as we continue to monitor plans for schools around the area, staff continues to work hard to balance the community benefits of opening facilities with a potential downfall of opening these facilities too early. At this juncture, facilities that have been opened will remain open, and the opening process for other facilities will remain on pause for this week. However, staff will continue to closely monitor these trends and related news to inform next steps. And that's what I have for this presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, or we can move on to the next presenter.
I do want to add, as I think Larry comes up here next, Councillor Demont, you asked for some additional information that you didn't see here tonight. I think the answer to the reason you didn't see it is that we've not readily found available Westminster-specific data. We're still looking, as I understand it, but we've not found that information available as you requested last week, and we'll continue to pursue that. And if we find it, we'll add it to our weekly report.
I appreciate that, Mr. Tripp. It would be very helpful if we could see that at some point.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's your pleasure. This is Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager. I'll just move us ahead to budget update, unless there's any additional questions. I don't see any there, Mr. Mayor, in the chat, so I'll just plow straight ahead with a very short update on city budget. I just, I just want to have a couple of follow-ups for you, Mayor and Council. I want to let you know that next Monday on the 17th, staff will set up a special regular meeting of the city council so that you may review and entertain an emergency ordinance to extend city budget deadlines through the end of November, given this state of emergency that the city has experienced, and of course, the COVID-19 pandemic. We're encouraged by some of the changes in the trend data. And as you know, that's very closely connected to the economic activity of our city and our state. And those two things are interconnected, so we'll be hopeful for the future. At the same time, we know that the case and death rates and hospitality are changing, excuse me, hospitalization are changing quite a bit, and we want to do as much budget planning around that as possible. Additionally, the city is vulnerable to changes in state and local orders in terms of its economic activity. So we'll be bringing forward for you on Monday night this emergency ordinance for your consideration. And also, I want to let you know that we will be presenting results of the polling activity related to potential changes in city revenues as described at your council planning session here at the end of July. So we will have those results and provide it in a presentation to you, Mayor and Council, a week from tonight. And of course, city staff is working very diligently toward the next steps in the budget process. We've closed our books for the month of July and began today organizing and analyzing all of the data, revenues and expenditures for the month of July. And we'll present updates to you on those results as soon as possible. With that, those are the updates from CFO's office on the budget. And unless there are any questions or comments, then we'll just proceed to long-term recovery. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dorr, you have a question, I believe, from Mr. Demont.
Thank you. I had an email that I had sent a couple of days ago or yesterday, actually Saturday, and I haven't heard anything back or have acknowledgement. And what that email was about was the job freeze. And I really am curious about, again, what we are hiring, what we're not hiring. Because I hear hiring a freeze, I hear budget crisis, $18 to $32 million. I really would like to see what we've hired since we went into an emergency situation, what we plan on continuing to hire throughout this year. So I just would reiterate that I could please see a list of those things.
Yes, Councillor Demont, thank you for the question. Larry, I'll handle this. Because we did get that, and I apologize if, I wish I had responded to you to let you know we were working on it. We do have staff putting that complete list together for you, and I would expect we'd have that to you and all the council within a day or so. And maybe a more even full report as to the rationale that we're using. I'm filling the positions that we're filling. I want to provide assurance to you that we're filling positions of need, and we're taking that really seriously. But that's a good question on your part, and we'll give you more information here soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions from council? Otherwise, we'll move on to long-term recovery.
Thank you, Mayor. This is John Hall, Economic Development Director. And I just have a short report as well, although I do want to cover a few topics for you this evening. By way of setting some context, want to give you the latest on some of the unemployment figures, both nationally and locally. In February of this year, the US unemployment rate stood at 3.5%. By April, it had jumped to 14.7%. Since that April peak, the unemployment rate has been on a steady decline, falling to 13.3% in May, 11.1% in June, and at the end of July stood at 10.2%. As a general rule, both preceding the COVID crisis and during the crisis, the state of Colorado has fared better when it comes to unemployment. The state of Colorado's unemployment rate in February was only 2.5%. It rose to a high of 12.2% in April, but has since fallen to just over 10%. And it appears, based on three months' worth of data, the most recent three months, that the unemployment rate in the state is hanging around 10% or slightly over. And for Adams and Jefferson Counties, that unemployment rate is at or just below 11%. So we're seeing a bit of a settling, at least for this three-month period, in employment figures. As a result, we continue to remain focused on activities that assist both our citizens and businesses within the city. We do that through CARES Act-funded activities, city initiatives, and partnerships with a variety of different partners. I just want to give you a few highlights. With respect to economic recovery, you're all aware that we launched the Westy Rise and Dine Program, which was directed at providing assistance to Westminster restaurants. We've approved 52 of those applications totaling $417,000. That's an average of about $8,000 per business and represents businesses that total 457 employees. This evening, you approved the contract for the restaurant and food security project. So that will be moving forward very quickly. We continue to work in the area of local government response on, with our utility bill assistance grant program. So far, we've had, we've approved 193 applicants for assistance with utility expenses. We also have been working with some of our partners on a variety of other things, as I said. Growing Home, it's reported, is distributing about 25,000 pounds of food in an average week. That compares to 2,500 pounds of food per month prior to the COVID crisis. So the food security issue is broad and deep, and we continue to devote resources to those efforts. We're also seeing challenges as related to housing issues. And this evening, you approved yet another assistance program, CARES-funded assistance program with the Foothills Regional Housing Authority, formerly the Jefferson County Housing Authority. And that is one of a handful of housing assistance programs that we've been engaged in. We're also providing direct assistance to some of our nonprofits who are in turn providing direct assistance to our residents. And much of that is being done through our Human Services Board. Last week, there was a discussion about Human Services Board funding and some action on council's part. We are back before you this evening to provide additional detail on Human Service Board supplemental grants totaling $100,000. And for that report, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny Grafton, Economic Policy and Development Manager in the Economic Development Department, who's been heading up the piece of our CARES Act Funding Recovery, known as People in Programs Serving People. I'm also going to ask Jenny to give you some late-breaking news on a new executive order issued by the governor related to evictions, at least at a high level, so that you are as up to speed as possible on those items. So Jenny, if you're available, could you please jump in?
I am. Thank you, John. So council, this portion of the CARES Act funds is really dedicated to those programs that directly touch our residents, as John mentioned, including the Westy Rise Above Housing Assistance Grant Program that council's already approved. And directly along those lines, I wanted to share with you, today Governor Polis extended the executive order that orders the temporary limiting of evictions. This is in effect for the next 30 days, so until September 9th, that additional coverage is provided. The specific language of that is that Governor Polis encourages landlords to take steps to limit evictions for tenants who have made a good faith effort to make rental payments or who have made a good faith effort to establish a repayment agreement. And I think we are confident that the programs we have developed with your assistance with the CARES Act funds will go a long way in helping tenants establish those agreements and enable them to stay in housing longer. As John mentioned, this also, this portion of the funds also covers additional expenditures that our community partners have experienced in trying to meet the urgent and emergency needs of the public. We are looking forward to having a presentation to you in a couple of weeks for some larger assistance for Growing Home. As John described, the numbers that they are dealing with are really quite substantial. So that is being addressed separately from the Human Services Board grants that John Preschner, our policy and budget analyst, has been working with that board on. And I believe Matt Williams has a slide that John will want to reference, actually, the next one following this. He's here tonight to give you a recap of the work that he did with them last week. I'll let John run through that. And then just for your reference, on the right-hand side kind of gives you a sense of where we are in the totals for these People and Programs Serving People programs. John?
Thank you, Jenny. This is John Preschner, Policy and Budget Analyst. So the Human Service Board launched a special COVID-19-related grant program, which is in addition to its regular annual grant program for nonprofit agencies that serve Westminster residents. This program is under the People and Programs Serving People bucket of CARES funding and is based on council's guiding principles. In all, 18 applications were received for a total of requests of $148,000. Through the allocated amount for this program, the board recommends funding all 18 organizations for a total funding level of $100,000 as presented. And this decision-making, the Human Service Board weighed heavily what the funds will be used for and tried to fund those programs that had the most impact on Westminster residents in need. This report is for information only and does not require any council approval at this time. And unless there's any questions or concerns with any of these, we will proceed in notifying the applicants of their award amount and getting them to complete a program agreement. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, before you guys walk away, I have several council members in the queue that have questions. So we'll, once you're done, I'll go back and have them start their questions. So make sure that Jenny and Dawn both stick around.
Thank you, Mayor. We're prepared for those questions. That council's pleasure.
All right. Mr. Demont, you're in queue first.
I'll start backwards. I actually support what you showed us here with the additional grants and the Human Service Boards. And I appreciate the work on this. I know those organizations that serve a lot of people in vulnerable areas of our society are really important, and they're, you know, very much hit by the pandemic. So I appreciate any extra help that we can give those folks that are serving those different areas of the community. But I did have some questions in some other areas previously that you covered on the front end of your comments, Mr. Hall. One, you had talked about the additional eviction moratorium that the governor did. How does that overlap with what the executive order that we heard out of the White House? And how does that play in with each other? Do you know? I believe that was something that came out of the White House this weekend as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Councillor, this is John Hall, Economic Development Director. Thank you for the question. We don't have a great deal of information on either of these items yet, given the executive order from the President was just signed, I believe, on Friday. And we actually just received the governor's order just shortly before the council meeting. So we haven't had a chance to look at them closely.
Okay. That's fine.
We'll come back to you.
Yeah, if you could provide both, that would be beneficial. I originally went into the queue, though. I want to go back to what we're doing for businesses and trying to be forward-looking. And I appreciate all the work that your team has done to assure businesses can operate as full capacity as possible. So one of the things, talking to some of the different business owners, as I've been out in the community and enjoying those that are able to be open and serve the public, is, you know, what happens once it starts getting cold? As this seems like we could be dealing with this for some time. Are we starting to look at how we could allow businesses to adopt in some creative ways? And, you know, how we could potentially even use some of these grant funds in order to help them accommodate as the weather starts changing in the, you know, as the seasons progress throughout 2020?
Thank you, Councillor. It's a great question. We are continuing to look at the development of, I won't call them new programs, but modifications to existing programs or working from lessons learned, perhaps standing-up programs that more directly address what we now understand many of the needs of business to be. For example, we are, and we're going to be bringing this back to council, we're now evaluating a business assistance program that will be more flexible in terms of how funds could be used, either for rent or for modifications to the interior of spaces to accommodate better operations internally. So we are trying to figure out how to best address how to best address the impacts of COVID insofar as indoor operations are impacted. It's a little unclear. You know, we also believe that that program ought to be flexible enough to allow for some purchase of PPE. We are hearing from a number of businesses that the price of PPE is on the rise again, and it's becoming a little bit more challenging to get their hands on it. So we're looking at the possibility of programs that address rental assistance, interior modifications, and the purchase of PPE. We expect to be back before you shortly with greater details on that, and I hope that answers your question.
It does. I think the other thing that I would mention, and I know that your team has worked closely with our chamber as well as some of the businesses. But, you know, I, again, talking to some business owners, trying to figure out if there was ways that they could use the outdoor space and maybe, you know, tents or heaters or, you know, I think everybody's trying to make sure that there is creative and innovative as possible to be able to weather this as good as possible. Because I think that there is concern that if you get pushed just in inside space, and we're at the same capacity limits that we're at today, you know, that very well could be very damaging for some of the businesses, specifically the restaurants. So I just want to, you know, make sure that we're, and I know that you guys are doing a good job of it, but continuing to reach out to those communities as they try to think through it and see how we can support them in those efforts as they try to find ways to be innovative. And I would also share with you, as I've talked to these different businesses in the last three weeks, they were very, very thankful to the city for how flexible that we were in being able to manage and adjust our licensing to allow them to expand outdoor spaces. So I want to make sure that I pass along that those kudos as well from the business owners that I've talked to.
Thank you, Councillor. And those additions are duly noted. And I believe we could certainly design a program that would accommodate some of the types of equipment that you identified that would allow for perhaps some additional outdoor dining extending deeper into our fall and perhaps the milder portions of winter.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Hall.
Ms. Sights?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councillor Demont, I think, for those thoughtful comments and questions. I want to go back to the Human Service Board supplemental grants that we have before us. I want to go back to the Human Service Board supplemental grants that we have before us. And I just want to say, you know, a big thank you to our Human Service Board. These are residents, you know, that have gone beyond the typical scope of what the Human Service Board does to try to meet and answer the challenge that COVID has given so many of our nonprofits. So I appreciate their extra efforts on this. And I may embarrass a colleague of mine, but the current liaison to the Human Service Board from council is John Vols. In the entire time that John has been on council, he has really pushed for us to more fully utilize our citizen boards and commissions to really make sure that we give autonomy and efficacy to these groups. And I do know, and maybe I'm wrong, but my guess and my belief is this was probably his idea, because I have consistently seen him challenge us to more fully utilize not just the boards where he is the liaison, but all of our boards across the city. And I just have to say thank you to him, thank you to staff for working on this. You know, throughout your entire presentation, Director Hall, I've just been impressed with how nimble and innovative you are and always looking for ways, or your team is rather, always looking for ways to meet our goals and rise to the challenge that you have before you. And it is hard, knowing this being a novel virus and everything changing, knowing exactly what that is, but you guys seemingly consistently knock it out of the park. So thank you very much. I'm very impressed, and I'm very appreciative of my colleagues' efforts on this.
Mr. Vols, after that, would you have anything to say?
Yes, Mayor Proton Sykes, I am embarrassed, but thank you for those very kind words. I really do appreciate that. That was very nice of you and very kind. One of my goals coming onto council was to, I really, I'd served a few years on the inclusivity board, wanted to reinvigorate and just find more of a role, more of an input from our boards and commissions. The Human Services Board stepped up when the, when it first came up, and I don't know that I can take credit for that, but, you know, I approached this, at one of the early meetings, I approached the Human Services Board and said, would you be interested in doing additional work? Here's what we might, here's what we're proposing. Unanimously, the entire board said, yes, absolutely, it's a great cause. It did add work, you know, as the liaison to the Human Services Board, I got to see firsthand the increased work, and it meant a lot more work for staff. So I want to take this moment to thank staff for doing this. But this was a great move to help our, our human service, local groups and human service organizations and nonprofits. And as we were helping, you know, businesses around our community, we're helping residents with rental assistance, and this was just another effort to kind of spread around the CARES Act money that came from the federal government. And the Human Services Board worked very hard, and the staff worked hard to get this prepared for them. So I thank John Preschner and the rest of the staff that was involved, and the Human Services Board really stepped up. So I have to commend them for all of their efforts, and it's a huge thank you. And in the end, they're all very appreciative, and we're, and actually, so I should say, either two or three said, please thank the council for including us and letting us do this. So this additional work, they were thanking me and wanted me to tell the council, thank you for including us in this effort, it was a great cause, we're happy to help. So I wanted to share that with my colleagues on council. And I also want to share, similarly to my other colleagues, I've had many business owners say thank you to our city staff. When we were, I had a chance to be around a couple owners of restaurants in our community, and they, I asked, how's it going? It's, well, city staff worked very quickly, very efficiently, made it very seamless to get everything they needed to have outdoor dining, to adjust their business practices to the new reality, right, that we're in right now. So I want to commend our staff and the clerk's office and the Economic Development Department and everyone else, the city manager's office, really great stuff here, and I'm hearing good feedback with how quickly you operated. And so I know the clerk's office is also involved in that, so I want to commend them, Economic Development, for working with our businesses. It's very important, and the people I've spoken to who had the chance to be involved in these programs are very, very appreciative. So thank you for all of that, and I commend you for your hard work. Thank you.
Ms. Grafton, I want to ask you to come back on, because I have a question, and it's more of a concern of what I thought I heard.
I'm right here, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I know Mr. Demott made a comment in regards to the executive order coming out of the White House, and I think there's a lot of unclear activities around that, and specifically the eviction order, if he even has the authority to push that out, but that's neither here nor there for us. My concern was the word I heard in the possibility of what's included in the executive order coming out of the governor's office was not a mandate, but an encouragement. And if a landlord chooses not to follow that encouragement, are they out of compliance? Because telling somebody I'm encouraging to do something versus I'm telling you to do it leaves a lot of broad questions to be answered, and what happens to the tenants?
Certainly, Mayor. So I read the order, or portion of the order directly as we received it, and so the language in there is encourage. This was just sent to us at 8:00 PM this evening, so there may in fact be some additional communications on this tomorrow, and we can certainly expand upon that as we hear more. I will say that just anecdotally, what we have heard from our partnership with Maker Housing Partners is that they really have been, not only as landlords themselves, but as they've launched these rental housing assistance programs, that many of the landlords in Westminster are very interested in trying to partner and help ensure that people are staying in their homes. So I think we have a lot of good landlords in Westminster that are taking encourage to heart and doing what they can.
All right. If, similar to Counselor Demott, if we get some clarification of the rulings from the city attorney's office on both the national policy and the state policy, that would be helpful, because my concern is that we are going to run into some landlords that are in a financial bind themselves, and to keep not having a rent paid is going to create a bigger problem as well. So there's no, there's no win-win on this. It's a lose-lose situation the way it currently stands. Are there any other questions or comments on Mr. Hall and his part? Mr. Demott, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, I think one of the things that I'm curious about, because the mayor raises a really good point and concern that I've heard, as far as, you know, if the president does have authority to do what he did as far as evictions, one of the questions that I've heard, and I haven't seen enough details around what he put forth on, and it was on Saturday, is, does the moratorium or the, you know, the mandate or whatever you want to call it, does it extend to the mortgage holders? Because that's another concern that I have, and I've mentioned before, is, you know, the folks who hold those are responsible for the mortgage payments to whoever holds the note, oftentimes they're not people that could, you know, take on that burden if there's a mortgage company who still wants a payment and the renter is not paying. So I am curious how either one of those orders impacts the actual landlord who, you know, is the property owner that has to pay the note on the property.
All right, Mr. Vols?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have a quick question. I've asked this before, and I think it's a difficult one to answer, but do we have any idea or any numbers or kind of a general estimate, how many businesses have gone out of business during this pandemic? Like local businesses, I don't mean...
Counselor Vols, this is John Hall, Economic Development Director. It is a difficult question, and it's constantly changing. What we've seen is approximately a quarter of the restaurants are closed in some fashion. Now, we don't always know what that means. That may mean that they're closed for a limited period of time, that may mean they're closed permanently, it may mean that they have shifted their business model slightly. So we are continuing to monitor retail businesses. Last I checked, over 80% of our retailers, that is, all retailers, were open in some fashion, but no doubt the impact is going to be significant. The most recent reports that I've been reading at a federal level and among various cities is that Labor Day will of course be a milestone as the end of summer and as children return to school for many of the restaurants in particular. So that's the next date I'm looking at, but we're happy to report out information that is as frequent and accurate as we can possibly get it. It's, as you might imagine, sometimes trying to determine whether a business is closed permanently is difficult, because the owner may not be present or you may not be able to contact them. So that's one of the challenges. But in working with our finance department, they also have the ability to look at that income stream, or at least that tax revenue stream that would have otherwise been generated by some of those businesses.
Thank you. I know it's a difficult question. I've asked it before. I know it's very, very difficult to have kind of a full handle on that, but thanks for that answer. And again, thank you for all your good work over there with our businesses and doing what we can. I think we've set an example here in Westminster. I think we've really been a city that reacted quickly and worked very diligently and very hard, hard work with side-by-side along our small businesses and doing everything we can to help them out. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor. If I can just add, these are challenging times, and I want to thank council for their willingness to consider alternative approaches to assistance and for allowing us to move as quickly as we have, sometimes with less information than I think sometimes any of us would like in making major policy decisions around business assistance and citizen assistance. But thank you for all of your support, and we believe we're making great progress. Thank you.
Mr. Tripp, has that covered both items three and four? Is that just number three, and you still have four to go?
Boy, I have to ask these gentlemen, is there anything else on CARES, Larry, that you want to talk about tonight?
Mr. Tripp, no, thank you. Just the Human Services Board update from Jenny Grafton and John Preschner. Thank you.
Thanks for asking, Mayor. I think that concludes our report.
All right. With that, let's move on to the post-meeting item. This is an overview of Senate Bill 20-217. Mr. Frankel, I think this has come out of your organization, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dave Frankel, City Attorney. This, I anticipate a joint presentation between Jeff Betts and Chief Carlson.
Okay. Chief, if you and Mr. Betts would like to take off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a brief presentation for you, and it will be in two parts, as Mr. Frankel notes. I'll hand the first piece off to Mr. Betts, who is, you know, is our police legal advisor and has helped us with this legislation as it has gone through and passed and is implemented. He'll hit some of the highlights, talks about some of the impacts on those from a legal point of view. And then the second part of the presentation, I have just a short statement to kind of fill in council on the impacts within the organization as it relates to Senate Bill 217. So that's how, our presentation is verbal, we have no PowerPoint. So at this point, I'll bring in Mr. Betts and ask him to kind of run through some of the highlights and the impacts.
Thank you, Chief Carlson and Mayor and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about a very important and very key piece of legislation that was put into law back in the middle of June, that is Senate Bill 217, also known as Measures to Enhance Law Enforcement Integrity. The purpose of tonight's presentation and discussion will be to provide council in the community with an overview of the key provisions of Senate Bill 217. As I noted earlier, this was probably the most significant piece of police reform legislation, certainly in my 25 years of working with the city, and a very important piece of legislation for, I think, the community as well as police officers in the city. That piece of legislation was 25 pages in length, so very significant body of law. It encompassed 13 new or amended provisions of law, and it moved through the legislature very quickly. This was a bill that was passed in this, or introduced in the Senate, and within nine days, it had moved through the Senate and through the House and was passed. And so as you can imagine, with a extremely large body of law and very significant piece of reform legislation, our primary focus over the past several months has really been to try to understand as best we can, you know, the implications of the law, what it requires our police officers to do, what it requires our police department to do, the impact that laws has on our officers, the city, and really the community. And so our primary focus is, really was to go ahead and try to understand that law and then provide initial training to our officers. And frankly, this is going to be ongoing training, because we've been out there talking with other police legal advisors, we've been talking to district attorneys, we've been trying to gather as much information as possible, because, because the fact that this law is so new and we really don't have any judges or case law that define some of the terms and some of the provisions, we're really trying to understand, you know, what this means and how we're supposed to respond to it. So that's been our primary focus over the last several months. And also, we wanted to identify for council some of the impacts this legislation will have on the city, the officers and the community. And as Chief Carlson mentioned, he'll talk a little bit more about the impacts that this legislation has had on the officers in the community. And then finally, I'd like to just discuss briefly with council how future legislation might help us provide additional guidance in the application of some of these key provisions that we're going to talk about tonight. So the first major provision really was the introduction of a new civil claim that can be brought in state court and based on violations of the Colorado Constitution and in instances in which an officer has failed to intervene in the unlawful use of force. And as part of that legislation, the, there is no immunity or caps on damages related to the Governmental Immunity Act. And so by way of background, the Governmental Immunity Act, or the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, really provides immunity to public entities and public employees in a number of circumstances. And what I mean by that is if there is immunity, it means immunity from civil lawsuit and civil liability. I think there's only six or seven instances in which that governmental immunity has been waived, but otherwise, if a claim is brought against a public entity or a public employee and there is no waiver of immunity, then that lawsuit will be dismissed by the courts. And really, there's a good policy reason behind the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, and that is governments and public employees often take on very risky types of work and responsibility, kind of like, you know, our EMTs, for example, who go out to an auto accident and they provide initial medical care. You know, if those EMTs were able to be sued, it would be difficult for cities and public entities to continue to provide those kind of services. And so, same, much like police officers, there's no waiver of immunity under the Governmental Immunity Act to bring a lawsuit for, you know, violations of constitutional violations. And so typically, what we found in the past is that claims, if they're going to be brought against police officers, for example, for use of force cases, those claims would be brought in federal court based on a violation of the US Constitution. This new state claim allows for claims to be brought against police officers based on the Colorado Constitution. Again, not only for use of force cases, but other violations of the Colorado Constitution. So this opens the door for maybe more suits being brought against officers, and like I said, there's no, there's no immunity under the Governmental Immunity Act, so there's no cap on damages. So if an officer is sued under this new state claim, they can be, a jury can award whatever amount of damages they think that the... claim, they can be, a jury can award whatever amount of damages they think that the injured party is entitled to, including punitive damages. The other significant provision in this new claim is that there is no qualified immunity in state cases. So in federal cases, the US Supreme Court has recognized for many years a doctrine called qualified immunity, and qualified immunity is basically immunity that is given to officers in situations where there is no clearly established law telling the officer that what they did with respect to use of force violated somebody's constitutional rights. And really, the reasoning for that doctrine is that the US Supreme Court recognizes that officers are often put in situations where they're having to try to gain compliance, or they're trying to gain control of a suspect who is resisting their arrest. And so, you know, a lot of these situations evolve very quickly, very rapidly, and in very tense situations. And so, the US Supreme Court recognizes that sometimes officers make mistakes, and they're not going to penalize that officer in those situations unless it's absolutely clear to that officer that what they were doing violated somebody's constitutional rights. So at least in federal courts, we have in the past been able to file a motion with the court based on qualified immunity, asking the court to dismiss the lawsuit. Now, I will tell you that, you know, those motions aren't freely granted. Those are very contested issues, but sometimes the court does grant those. And in those situations, the officer would be granted immunity and the case would be dismissed, and the officer would not have to go through a jury trial to determine whether or not they violated that person's constitutional rights. So in those situations, the judge would make that decision. Under this new state claim, there is no qualified immunity. So the, as, as trying to defend officers in these types of cases, we will not be able to raise that as a defense in these new state cases. The other significant provision is that if the injured party prevails in bringing their lawsuit against the officer, then they would be entitled to an award of reasonable attorney fees. And again, that is something that was not allowed under the Governmental Immunity Act. So those are pretty significant changes with respect to the kind of claims that can be brought against officers with respect to civil liability. Now, when it comes to the impact that it has on public entities such as the city, the cities are now required to pay for any settlement or any judgment that is made against a police officer related to this new claim. Now, there are two exceptions to that. One is if there is a criminal conviction of the officer for the claims that arise out of the civil lawsuit. So if a criminal charges are brought against the officer for excessive force, unlawful force, and they're convicted, and subsequently a civil lawsuit is brought, then the city may but is not required to indemnify that officer. And so, that's a pretty significant change with respect to this new state claim as well. Because typically, when you think about a criminal conviction, it's a situation where an officer has intentionally violated somebody's constitutional rights. Well, at least under the old law, the governmental immunity law, cities would not be required to indemnify an officer who acted intentionally or acted willfully or wantonly. Now, unless there's a criminal conviction, the city would be required to go ahead and indemnify that officer. The other exception is in the event that the city would determine that an officer acted in bad faith, then and a lawsuit is brought, then the, the officer is personally liable up to five percent or $25,000 of the judgment or settlement, whichever is less. And then the city would remain on the hook for the balance of that judgment or settlement. So those are basically the two exceptions in which a city would not necessarily be required to pay all or part of a civil judgment, which is again, much different than the previous law under, under the Governmental Immunity Act. So, you know, in terms of impacts to the officers, it really provides additional ways an officer can be held civilly liable. So I think we're going to probably see more cases being brought against officers, especially when you take into consideration that qualified immunity is not a defense in these state claims. And so that means that fewer cases will likely be dismissed and more juries will be deciding these cases. And then the other significant thing that I talked about is for the first time, officers can be held personally liable in these situations in the event that the city would make a determination that that officer acted in bad faith with respect to the incident which they're being sued. And that personal liability can be as much as $25,000. Now, impacts to the city, again, you know, the city is now required to indemnify officers really for, you know, you know, not only doing their, their general jobs and maybe making mistakes, but if an officer engages in an intentional act and is subject to punitive damages, the city under this new law is required to indemnify those officers absent a conviction of, in a criminal case, and would be responsible not only for what are called actual damages, damages that an injured party receives, like emotional distress or injuries to, you know, if, let's say, as a result of the force, they broke their arm or they broke their jaw. Those are actual damages that a jury can certainly compensate the injured party for. But a jury can also award punitive damages, and punitive damages are really intended to punish the person for their, really engaging in intentional conduct. You know, we have never been, as a city, under the Governmental Immunity Act, we have never been responsible for indemnifying an officer punitive damage, for punitive damages. That's, that's really not a good policy to have to really compensate somebody for their intentional acts. And, and more importantly, the city would not, at least currently, would not be able to ensure against punitive damages. So that would be a financial responsibility that the city would have to bear in those situations. Again, the elimination of any damage caps creates additional financial responsibility because there is no limitation now. It's really whatever jury decides would be appropriate for those damages. And then again, the mandatory award of attorney fees to the prevailing plaintiff is something that is new, at least in terms of state claims. Certainly, under, in federal law, bringing actions against officers in use of force cases, they would be entitled to reasonable attorney fees. The other significant provision that I want to focus on is where there is a civil finding in a civil lawsuit of unlawful use of force or failure to intervene resulting in post decertification. So POST stands for Police Officer Standards and Training. That is a board that really issues a certification to peace officers around the state of Colorado that allows them to be a police officer. Without that certification, they cannot serve as a police officer. And so, there's a new provision that really would require POST to permanently revoke that police officer certification if they are either found criminally or civilly liable for the failure to intervene in the use of unlawful force, or found criminally or civilly liable for the use of unlawful physical force, or, yeah, physical force. So there's now two situations, and I want to focus really on the civil aspect of this. It's pretty unusual where a civil jury really, when a claim is brought against an officer for use of force, that a jury would not only be deciding damages, but the result of their determination, if they were to find that officer to be civilly liable, would result in the officer losing their certification, which means they really lose their career as a police officer. And so, that, that's a pretty significant, in, significant change and impact to officers with respect to, you know, the possibility that they can lose their career in a civil case. And why that's significant is because I'm not even sure, it's unclear from the law whether the civil juries would even know that that's an impact or a result of their actions or determinations. There's really no reason for a jury, I guess, in a civil case where the issue is whether or not an officer used unlawful force, whether or not that jury would even consider or know or would be relevant to their determination that the officer will, if found liable, would result in a loss of their certification and career, basically. So that's a little bit concerning with respect to that issue. And, and there really is a lack of due process, at least in terms of the law currently, in terms of that loss of certification. So typically, what happens, much like most professions, you know, if a license or certification is at issue, that person, in this case, an officer, would be able to, you know, make a case. They would have certain process that they would be entitled to, including the appeal of that decision by a board. Here, there is nothing in the law that really gives the officer that appellate right, at least with this POST board. There, the only thing that the law says right now is that it's a permanent, permanent decertification unless a court turns that decision over. But the law really doesn't give us an idea of, you know, what court, what that process would look like, and how that officer would get that decision overturned. So that is left to, you know, really something that really needs to be clarified, I think, in order to give some idea of what circumstances that, you know, an officer can get that decision overturned and get their certification back. And then, really, what is a result of the loss of certification in the civil case, it really means that the officer will likely be terminated from their job because they can no longer serve as a peace officer. And that's irregardless of whether or not the department found that officer to be in violation of policy or that they did something wrong. So, you know, typically, when somebody makes a complaint against a police officer, our department does a very thorough internal affairs investigation, takes statements, officers, it gets independent witnesses, really looks closely at the officer's conduct and actions, and then they've made the determination as to whether or not that officer's action violated any policy. And, you know, in many instances, you know, the department will determine that the officer acted within policy. But that doesn't prevent an injured party from bringing a civil lawsuit. And in this case, if a jury were to determine that the officer did in fact use excessive force in their minds, then that results in that loss of certification. And I think the department would have really no, you know, really no recourse but to go ahead and terminate that officer, again, regardless of their findings. The next category or key provision of the law is mandatory discipline. And mandatory discipline on the part of the department for a finding that there was a failure to intervene. And I didn't really get into this in great detail, but there are another provision in the law, in this new law requires officers to really intervene in a situation where they see a fellow officer using unlawful force, and then they have an obligation to report that. If the department would determine that in fact, an officer did fail to intervene in those circumstances where the force results in death or serious bodily injury, then that, then the law requires that the department take mandatory discipline against that officer up to and including termination. We also then, the department would then have an obligation to notify POST of that discipline, and POST will go ahead and decertify that officer's certification. So again, that would result in most likely a termination of that, that officer's employment. And then there's also mandatory discipline for the failure of an officer to activate or tamper with a body camera, which again, is another provision that the chief will talk about, be talking about, and that is departments' requirements by July of 2023 to have body cameras. Now, the significance of that is that typically, you know, employers decide, you know, whether or not an officer will be terminated and the level of discipline associated with that, that finding. But here, the law, you know, dictates that, mandates that certain cities take certain steps, including termination, again, which has traditionally been reserved the employer. So that's a pretty significant change in, in the law as well. The next area that I want to focus on is really this expanded criminal liability for officers. Now, I didn't, I really didn't talk about this as well, but this is another significant change with respect to Senate Bill two seventeen, and, and that is the use of force. There, the use of force law has really been rewritten in Colorado based on Senate Bill two seventeen. Prior to, prior to this change in the law, an officer's use of force was reviewed based on what is called an objectively reasonable standard. And that's, you know, how would an objectively reasonable officer respond in terms of whether to use force and the level of force based on the totality of the circumstances that the officer is facing? Understanding that a lot of these situations, again, happen very quickly, it's a very tense situation. So all those factors are taken into consideration to determine whether or not the officer's use of force was appropriate. Now, that has changed significantly with this, with the new use of force provisions that deals not only with use of force in, you know, non-deadly situations, but also deadly use of force as well. And there are a number of specific requirements in this new law that an officer must meet in order to use force in certain circumstances, and dictates really the level of force that they can use in certain situations. So it's interesting that, you know, talking to various DAs and talking to other police legal advisors, there's a lot of uncertainty how those new requirements or specific provisions are going to be applied in these situations. And so as a result of that, it's possible that we may see more officers charged with crimes in these situations as a result of that. And again, we don't really have judges that have, you know, kind of made decisions or have reviewed this law or cases that have given us direction. So that is yet to be defined, and we will see how that, that works out. The same thing with duty to intervene. That is a new criminal liability for officers. You know, some cases are pretty obvious where an officer needs to intervene, much like the George Floyd case. That was pretty obvious, I think, to most people. That's a situation where officers who are standing around should have done something to prevent that tragedy. But, but there are other situations where it's not as clear to the officer who was not, not directly involved in trying to, you know, gain control of a resisting suspect. And so, that's why, you know, the previous law really focused on, you know, what, what the officer's perceptions was, how were they responding to what the suspect was doing. And, you know, so that makes it a little bit more difficult, and I think it could lead to some cases, criminal charges being brought against officers for failing to intervene in those situations. And then finally, one other area is chokeholds, where I think could expose officers to additional criminal liability. The definition in the, in the new law for chokeholds is very broadly defined to include, you know, really, an officer applying pressure to any part of the body that results in a suspect having difficulty breathing. I'm not sure that's what the intent of the legislation was, but the way the definition currently reads, it really is very broad, and it encompasses other parts of the body other than just the neck or putting pressure around the windpipe or the carotid arteries. And so, that, that causes some concerns, I think, for the officers in terms of what, you know, that, where they were typically trying to use their body or a knee in the back to try to gain control of the suspect so that they could put the suspect in handcuffs. And then, you know, they're trained right now to, as soon as they, they do that, they, they bring the person off the prone position and get them in a situation they can breathe. But now they're concerned whether or not they can actually even use those techniques to try to gain control over a resisting suspect. So, you know, the impacts, I think, to the officers are, there are definitely additional ways where an officer can be charged and may be prosecuted in these situations. It also creates additional ways police officers can be sued civilly, again, resulting in judgments and post decertification and a loss of career. And then, you know, we, I don't think we've seen this yet, but I don't think it would be unreasonable but I don't think it would be unreasonable for police officers to be pretty concerned about criminal liability, civil liability, and, you know, loss of their career and be a little bit more hesitant, maybe a little bit more reluctant to enforce certain laws for, you know, for fear of criminal prosecution or personal liability. And so those are some of the impacts that I think we can see as a result of, you know, some of these provisions that are new as a result of Senate Bill 217. And then finally, this, I think we can expect, I think it's a reasonable expect that, you know, Senate Bill 217 will be revisited in the next legislation. And I think there would be beneficial, you know, to revisit some of the provisions that we talked about today to provide some additional clarity, maybe provide some definitions that currently don't exist in the law, that define terms and phrases and better define processes and standards of review with respect to, you know, the use of force. When a department makes a determination whether the officer acted in good faith or bad faith, you know, what that process looked like, what is good faith, you know, how is that defined? Maybe gain some consistency in terms of the application of those standards throughout the state by other law enforcement or all law enforcement departments. Standards of review with respect to the duty to intervene, certainly a very important, you know, obligation, and our officers certainly understand that. You know, now it can result in criminal liability. But again, as I mentioned, some of these, you know, situations are very obvious and some aren't. So it would be beneficial for the law to give us more direction with respect to when an officer does need to intervene and how would they do that? I mean, do they do it verbally? Do they physically try to get in the mix between, you know, resisting suspect and the officer who's using inappropriate force? So there's really no direction at this point in the law that gives us an idea how those, how the officer's actions should be judged. And then loss of post certification based on a civil on civil liability. Again, typically, you know, for other situations where a post is going to take somebody's certification away, you know, there is due process associated with that, and they have the right to appeal. That that really is unclear with respect to this law. And and so so those are some of the things that I think would be very helpful if the legislature would revisit that in the next time around and give us some additional clarity, at least up until we, you know, and we can get some case law and we get some judges that give us some definitions and and try to really provide some, you know, direction for the officers. You know, we, in talking to the DAs, and we recognize this, the chief recognizes, the department recognizes, I think everybody recognizes this, that police officers have, you know, very difficult jobs, especially when they're, they have to use force to go ahead and try to seduce a resisting suspect. And it's really, really important for those officers to have clear guidance with respect to the limits of that force, when they could use force. Because it's only natural, I think, and a concern by the officers that, you know, hey, if I use this level of force or if I act in this situation, am I going to lose my career? Am I going to go ahead and be charged criminally? And we really do not, we can't afford to have officers second guessing themselves and hesitating. They need to understand and have clear guidance with respect to, you know, what this law means and what they can and they cannot do. Any hesitation on our part can certainly result in their own injury, injury to third parties, and frankly, injury to the suspect. They they need to be able to act quickly, and we need to give them strong and clear guidance with respect to with these new laws. So hopefully, you know, through the next legislative process, we can, we can try to work and gain some of that consistency, gain some of that clarity. And with that, the the other significant provision that we're going to talk about today really is this obligation of all departments to have body worn cameras by July of 2023. And I was going to turn that over to Chief Carlson to go ahead and address that with you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have with respect to the areas of law that I that I covered.
Mr. Demond?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Betts. I think it's been, you've been very thorough in in sharing with the public some of the concerns that I've heard as far as, I think you said it very eloquently, that these men and women are in a job that we really can't have them second guessing themselves for everybody's safety involved, including suspects. I want to know, though, and this may be a question for the chief and maybe not you or maybe you, but like, you know, give me like some examples of how this might have our officers acting differently from, say, reporting to domestic violence or traffic stops or proactive policing, which I, in my mind, are important tasks. Has this shifted the way that we're doing policing right now in Westminster? Either permanently or while we and or while we sort out some of the the details of this bill and how it actually plays out?
Counselor Demond, I'd be happy to answer that. Good evening, counsel and mayor. This is Tim Carlson. I'm the chief of police. You know, that's a really difficult question to answer right now. I think that Mr. Betts explained quite clearly that I think a natural tendency is to kind of, until we get some clarity and full understanding of of how some of these things will be applied. I think the natural tendency is to say, well, maybe that's not a step I need to take right now. So it's, you know, we certainly have the expectation of our officers that they go out and enforce the law, they continue to enforce the law. There, there's just a lack of clarity now in some of these areas that we're still working on. And it's, you know, it'd be hard pressed to say they're not going to do this anymore. They are going to do that. And we have the expectation and they have the desire to go out and do police work, protect our community, find those that are that are engaged in criminal conduct and intervening in it. But this this gives us, this muddies the waters a little bit. And and I think there is some, I don't know if hesitation is the right word, but I've certainly heard it. And and there is a little, let's wait and see how some of this plays out.
Well, I appreciate the answer. And I obviously, you know, I know a lot of people throughout Colorado and law enforcement and some of what I've heard that, you know, I just think is important from my perspective that the public knows is that same thing, is that I've heard from officers, you know, that their hearts are there, but they feel their hands are tied because they don't know, they don't know the ins and outs of this. So, you know, one of the other things I think would be helpful, and I think Mr. Betts has gotten to it a lot, but as a city, you know, how do we advocate going into this next year in session to clarify some of these things and some of these concerns as well as educate the public so that they can put across some of these concerns to their representatives? And I know that Mr. Betts did a good job with that. But I also think, you know, from your perspective, chief, that's important. You know, anything that you could add to the conversation, I think it's valuable to the safety of our city.
And I agree, and I appreciate that. And, you know, when I get to some of my comments, I think I'll address a little bit of that the best I can. And so, yeah, I think I'll, I think you, I think I'll be able to touch on that as I work through my comments.
There are other questions of Mr. Betts at this time, otherwise we'll move on and let the chief make his comment. Chief Carlson, would you go ahead, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Let me, let me just start by, I'm just going to highlight a couple of points on the body worn camera issue that Mr. Betts alluded to earlier. This law, this legislation makes body worn cameras mandatory for all local law enforcement and state patrol by July of 2023. That makes it mandatory for any officer who interacts with members of the public to be wearing a body camera. That's pretty broad, but that's what the law states. It's important to note that other state law enforcement agencies are exempt from having body cameras. That's a part of this provision as well. It also requires that body cameras constantly record any contact with very limited exceptions. What that means is it's not only the cost, the impact, it's not only the cost of the cameras, but as many of you know, a large part of the cost is in the data storage that we have. So there's, there's very limited exceptions when an officer will not be required to activate his or her camera in contacts with the public. That's a mandatory part of this of this body camera law. In addition to that, it creates a list of sanctions for an officer who fails to activate their camera, tampers with the video, intentionally interrupts the recording of any kind. And and those sanctions include criminal sanctions against the officer, civil sanctions against the officer, administrative sanctions that are mandated through the employees or the officer's agency. It's a potential revocation of their post certification. And there's also a provision that a court will, in either a criminal or civil case, makes a, would make a finding of permissive inference that any missing video would have showed misconduct by the officer. And so again, that's a pretty powerful language. And there are some exceptions that that were written in as far as when a camera is turned off, but that's a provision of the statute as well. An important provision of that body camera provision in the law is that if a complaint is made on an officer's behavior, all body worn camera video must be publicly released within 21 days of the complaint being received by the agency. And that that camera video, with very limited exceptions, is the raw video, unredacted in many ways within 21 days of the complaint. And the significance of that is there's often ongoing investigations. There's issues of privacy and so forth that that are addressed to some extent in the legislation. But that's a significant impact of that body camera legislation. We haven't delved into a lot of the details on that. This is, the provisions here aren't put in place until July of 2023. And as Mr. Betts alluded to, that we're focusing quite heavily right now on our ability to educate and train our officers on the provisions that are in place now. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to just offer a statement to council on some of my thoughts and and some of the impacts. As I understood, council's request was to to learn some of the impacts of Senate Bill 20, 20 or 217, excuse me, in our community and within our department. And I thought Mr. Betts did a real nice job of articulating some of the legal details. And of course, you know, Senate Bill 217 is on top of a lot of the things that are happening throughout our nation in policing. You know, these past few months have been a pivotal time in policing community relations across our country. The Westminster Police Department continues to be committed to protecting and serving our community the best we know how. We understand more than ever the need to listen and engage with our community and the need to reevaluate the way that we deliver our services. In the light of the national events that we've all seen, the Westminster Command Staff, really very early on, as these things started breaking loose, we sat down and took a very hard look at our services and our department to determine where and how any adjustments may need to be made. We've developed a five-part strategy as part of our effort in moving forward. Those parts include communication with our community, an evaluation of our systems and processes, evaluation of our policy and supervision, and evaluation of our community partnerships, and an extra effort at maintaining officers' physical and mental health. You know, when we, when we're implementing our desired service level in our community, we've embarked on a very intensive listening project in our community. That started very early on and actually started much before a lot of the events that we've had. We're attending small and large gatherings made up of people representing wide and diverse community membership. And we've been doing that over the past several months. Those sessions have been very informational in helping us identify what our community desires. This is included, we've included reaching out to some of our most vocal critics of policing and finding out what what they have to say and what their perspectives are. I'm currently in the process of launching a chief's advisory panel of citizens that will help me, that I can listen to and help me inform on issues of policy and direction and and community attitudes. And so that hopefully will begin within the next few weeks. But in speaking with you tonight about Senate Bill 217, it is not my intent to either politicize or criticize what's been passed into law. There are, however, real impacts to our profession of policing and to the individuals who carry out those duties and also their families. The sudden and transformative nature of this bill, with very little input from the profession that it addresses, has led to anxiety, uncertainty, and frustration with many of our officers. Much of the frustration and anxiety comes from the sudden and dramatic changes in the rules, regulations, and case law decisions that form the basis of our profession, many of which you just heard from Mr. Betts. The addition of this new civil process to sue officers in state court under provisions of the state constitution, while removing the protective provisions of qualified immunity and protections under the Governmental Immunity Act exposing the officers to potential personal liability has created a powerful state of uncertainty, anxiety, and confusion. The very name of the bill, Concerning Measures to Enhance Law Enforcement Integrity, the personal penalty provisions in the bill, and the mandating of body worn cameras for all officers indicate a new low in trust in law enforcement, which has been felt very deeply by our people. The intense national narrative to defund the police as well as the pervasive narrative that systemic racism permeates policing and all use of force is abusive have added to that level of anxiety and disbelief. I've never seen it in 34 years in the business. All of this is occurring, of course, amidst a raging pandemic where officers daily have continued to work in our community at great personal risk of exposure to that virus. The new provisions of this bill for personal financial liability, loss of post decertification, and new avenues for criminal and civil liability for officers only add to the sense of anxiety, frustration, and even anger. I can tell you from the chief of police in your city that the organizational stress level is at an all-time high. However, having said all that, this new legislation is the law, and the Westminster Police Department is now and will continue to fully comply with the law. We're addressing the issues the officers are raising and feeling through training and discussions of consequences of what it means as officers continue to deliver service. Keep in mind, most of this legislation went into effect on signing with almost no advance warning and with no ability to train and inform the officers of its impact. An additional level of concern, as Mr. Betts brought up, is that much of this legislation creates new law. And as such, there's, there's no case history, no case law history. Those court decisions and clarifications will only come over time when cases are being heard, as our legal advisors have reminded us repeatedly. But in the meantime, officers are left to interpret and act without the benefit of longstanding court case law as we had under previous legislation. I wanted to bring to council's attention that your recent proactive efforts in publicly announcing your continued support for our officers in person and in writing has been well received and much appreciated. Most of our community continues to verbally support our officers. However, the critics have been taken to a new level of verbal condemnation of our cops. Our officers see it and they hear it most every day. And importantly, these things are also heard and seen by the families of our officers. Whether it is the continuing national anti-police narrative or the impacts of Senate Bill 217, I've never seen a time in three and a half decades in this profession that has had such a powerful and painful impact on the families of our law enforcement officers. I want to tell council this, that we will continually comply. I want to tell council this, that we will continually comply with Senate Bill 217 in the legislation without a doubt. We will work to better understand the implications of this law and its impact on our officers and on our community. We're dedicated to support our officers through education, training, and to listen to their concerns. We're also dedicated to continue efforts to build trust in our community through the listening that I've talked about, to all diverse voices in our city, engage with them in person, and continue to protect our community and serve it with professionalism. You know, as a department, we've continued to listen and engage with our community in a variety of ways. One, I've, I've talked about this, this strategy which focuses on communication with our community. We've called them front lawn conversations that we've met with various groups in the community, just in their front line and with their neighbors and just listening to them, what their expectations are. We conducted a police-specific community survey that started before all these things blew up. We, we have the raw data of that survey. We're compiling it. We're going to have it ready for public consumption and certainly give it to council shortly. As Councilor Scully mentioned in her opening, we've started our co-responder program that's been very successful. That's been working for a couple of months and has had tremendous success, and we're, we're looking forward to more success. And as for our officers, we're continuing to provide them support. As Counselor Demont mentioned earlier, the way we're doing it now, we're listening to their concerns. We're working on training. We're working through them or with them on the meaning and application of their actions in this environment and with some of these new laws. We've also increased our psychological services for both our officers and their families. Through the city manager's office, I've asked city council to fund our body worn cameras as soon as possible, not waiting for the July 2023 deadline. I believe our officers now feel that it's important that they have that video to, to capture their behavior and see what they're actually dealing with. We continue to work through organizations such as the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, the CML, the Police Legal Advisor Group, local DA's offices, to try to figure out the interpretation and clarification of some of the law and its, and its changes. We hope to have a voice in that process in the new legislative session through those groups to consider some of the changes that would be helpful in clarification in certain legal areas as Mr. Betts has described earlier. I want to assure council and our community that we will continue to provide professional and honest policing in our community, even as changes happen in our society. We continue to serve. We love this job. Our cops know what they're doing, and I care greatly for them. So that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Carlson, I appreciate what you and Mr. Betts have given us tonight. This is a monumental task at, at the best. As Mr. Betts described, this is a piece of legislation that flew through both houses of the state legislature in a, in a pace that I don't think I've ever seen in all the years that I've been here on council as a councilman or as mayor. There are so many things that are not clarified in this law that need interpretation. I think somewhat to Mr. Betts' comment, some of this will never get clarified until there is case law that's been established. And the problem is, what's the impact is to not only our officers, but their families while this is taking place over the next potentially several years before some of this is decided? Because even if you get a case decision, the appeals process to those decisions could take forever. But to the officers, the men and women, to their families, on my behalf, from me personally, I want to express our sincere support for what's going on. We're doing everything we can to help the chief and our city attorney's office. The mayors of the metro area have had a number of meetings to discuss what we can do to try to make this law better. And as the chief pointed out, the professional organizations also are trying to make ways into meeting with the legislature at the beginning of the year, if not sooner, to try to get them to understand the lack of clarity that's in the law that's leaving so many things undone that we don't want to put any officer in a position where they have to hesitate to think about what the interpretation of the law is instead of enforcing the law. Because as the chief pointed out, as Mr. Betts pointed out, that could be detrimental to not only the officer, the criminal suspect that they're trying to deal with, or somebody even in a situation where they're not really the suspect, but could become involved in the incident. There are so many things that we need to get clarified in this law in order to be able to effectively train our officers on what the law is and how we expect them to interpret it. Unfortunately, we have a number of months that we're going to be without that clarification as we're going forward. Mr. Demont, you had a comment?
Just thank Mr. Mayor. First off, thanks again to Mr. Betts and to Chief Carlson for, specifically for your words in, in how this affects your people. My prayers and thoughts are with the police of, of, you know, really of the nation, especially here at home. As many of you know, my dad has retired Denver, and I look at some of these laws and I talk to him and what kind of situation some of this would have put him in, in his 30-plus years in, in policing and 14 years in homicide in Denver. And, you know, he's very frustrated for the people who are still in the job and can't imagine doing the job with the constraints that have now been put by the legislator. I understand that, that, you know, the intent was better policing in the, you know, for what my opinion of, of this is. I ran on a couple of things that were my top bullet point when I campaigned over multiple campaigns, and my first bullet was always safe, which meant trained and equipped police and fire departments and appropriate fire and police staffing. I think one of the unfortunate things that I've, I've consistently heard from my perspective is, you know, is taking funding away is going to fix problems in our society. And I think the, the advent of what Counselor Scully mentioned with those professionals that are helping us with mental health are, you know, point in case of something where we need more resources for the officers, more training for their officers that make both our public and our officers and suspects all safer by having more resources and more training. And I think that's pretty consistent if you look at the data. So my ask to the community, as you hear how this affects you, you know, we do have an election coming up and ask the people who are going to be making these laws and coming back and looking at these if you're concerned. One of the most troubling things that I've heard at the rate that this went out and it was passed, a lot of people still don't really understand what was done down at the legislature last year as far as law enforcement. And I think if you look at our citizen survey and across Colorado from, you know, people I talk to, it's, you know, a high percent that people like their, their safety. They like their community to be safe. They like making sure that we have good police departments. Obviously, we want to weed out the, the bad and, you know, parts of the law that do that, great. But I think that there's a lot of work that could be done. So I really appreciate the fact that you have come tonight and let the public understand more of this law. I know some of it's still an unknown, but I very much appreciate it. And I think it's very important being that this is one of the top priorities of our citizens as we do our work in making policy for the city of Westminster.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too wanted to thank Mr. Betts and, and the chief and especially Chief Carlson for his, his statement. I think it was direct and heartfelt and speaks for his department, and that is greatly appreciated that, that we can hear that and our residents can hear that too, knowing that our officers will do what's right. And, but right now, it's, it's a, it's a hard time, and I hope that we can use our, our contacts with our local legislators to help fine tune this, this law so that it, it, it does not hurt policing because Counselor Demont took the words out of my mouth. As our residents have time and time again talked about how safety is important to them and protecting those who protect us is, is tantamount to what I stand for too. So thank you.
Ms. Scully?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Betts and Chief Carlson for being here tonight and presenting. We have a lot of work ahead of us and, but I, I know that as a team, we can get through this and, and we will do what's right and we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. And so thank you very much for being here tonight and for being so thorough and honest in your opinions and your thoughts. Thank you.
Slides?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, a sincere thank you to our chief. I, I really appreciate your thoughts, the sincerity and, and, you know, honestly, almost a level of vulnerability in your discussion on this topic tonight. And always, Mr. Betts, thank you for your careful analysis of this law and how it potentially can impact and how it will impact our organization. I, I specifically want to say thank you to the chief for his leadership, whether it was the statement that came out from our PD right after George Floyd, that tragic death. And throughout this entire change with 217 and its passage, I really appreciate how you have really stepped out communicating the values of your department, of our city, of, of the organization to our community. And I'm really happy to hear about your listening. I, I think that we end up with better policy when we really hear the concerns of others. I think that the program that Counselor Demont and Counselor Scully highlighted, that co-responder program is very similar to what a lot of the most vocal critics of the police department are looking for. And so I hate the term "defund the police department" because I think it's, I think it oversimplifies the issues. I think it's confrontational. I think it's, it's intended to be oppositional. I think the term "invest in the community" is, is more appropriate, and I feel like that's what we are doing through the various initiatives. And, and I want to see us continue to expand that. So similar to Counselor Demont, I don't think we're going to be spending less on the police department. We are going to be spending more with body cameras with all of these types of expanded programs. So I, I want to make sure I'm very clear in communicating how appreciative I am of our first responders, how I believe that if our goal as council, and I believe every member of this council wants to provide a high quality of life to all of our residents regardless of zip code, you cannot do that without safety. That's an essential part of quality of life. And so we want to make sure that our officers have the tools, the training, the resources to be able to promote safety for all residents and for themselves. And so that's what I'm committed to. But I, I do see my role as a city councillor to listen to my residents and to my constituents and try to be that bridge of understanding. Thank you so much for everything you've done, and I look forward to more updates.
Mr. Bowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to join in, I guess. And I, I want to join in and thank Chief Carlson, Mr. Betts for this, this session. This has been good, and we need to continue this kind of communication. I think it's very positive, very valuable. I also, like everyone else who's already spoken, feel very strongly that we need to support our officers, and not just the officers. As we're supported, then we need to think of their families and what they're going through. So they're very crucial members of our team and the core services our city provides. So we need to do what we can to make sure they have the, the training, the resources. And I'm committed that, like everyone else has said here so far. I guess my ask would be, you know, to me, it was really troubling and it's somewhat sad to hear that organizational stress level is at an all-time high. And that's not surprising, but I, I want us, my ask would be for the chief and the deputy chiefs to continue talking to us, to let us know as city councillors and as a council, what we could do to support you and, and keep these lines of communication open. I think it's, we're in some really challenging times. So I, I want us to continue this kind of communication, this dialogue, to know what we can do to further and do the best we can do to support our officers and then through that, support their families as well. So thank you very much, and thanks for being here, and I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith, if you're talking, we don't have any voice on you. Ms. Parker, can you tell if Ms. Smith is muted?
Give me one second, Mary. Let me take a look. I show her mic is on.
Okay, she's indicating her mic isn't working. Just hang on a minute. Go ahead, Ms. Smith, if you're ready. Ms. Smith, why don't you walk over here where I'm at? You can use my microphone. Go ahead, mine's on.
Can you all hear me? Awesome. So thank you, Mr. Betts and Chief Carlson for your presentation and your words to not only city council, but to our community. I have several friends, particularly in Denver, who are officers, and I understand their high anxiety and stress levels at this time. And it's, it's stressful to hear, not only as a friend, but as a council person. And ultimately, we, as a council, need to be looking at how this truly affects our community and all of our first responders and looking at that as a whole and really looking forward to the conversation with my council or my fellow council members as far as our budget is concerned. I understand that we are having to implement our body cameras for our police officers. And, you know, one of the takeaways that I had gotten in the Westminster Citizens Police Academy is that there's always more to the story that we're not seen. And so I'm particularly cautious with having to implement such footage because it only shows on such a narrow view and only showing one side of the story. Not just that, but showing, showing how we can just, I don't know, it's, it's hard to put into words really. And Chief Carlson, you've done it so graciously and beautifully. And so I just want to, to explain my undying support for our police officers and let y'all know that we are here. I am here for your support. And, but thank you for this. I've learned so much. Not only, we've gone over this a couple of times now, and I've learned so much. There's so much to dive into with this new bill, which makes it super complicated. But I'm looking forward to having more conversations with not only the community, but my fellow colleagues. Thank you.
Mr. Betts, do your chief, Carlson, have anything else you'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one final thought. And I've said this to a lot of people over the past few months. I think one of the best conversations that's I think one of the best conversations that's going to come out of all the events over the past few months is is this conversation of, um, you know, what what do we have our police officers do? Um, and and the context I mean that in is along with the co-responders and the issue of mental health and homelessness and addiction and those kind of things. I think it's a really good conversation to say, you know, who, how do we respond and who responds? And what's the right resource and and how do we do that, particularly at the local level? And 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 what that kind of looks like in the community and what can the community expect? And and how can we meet those expectations and take uh keep nine-one-one for being the emergency room for the community? Um, and find other resources like they've done in the medical community. We now have uh, you know, urgent care centers. We have different things where you don't always go to the emergency room. That's the best analogy I can make. But it but it's those conversations which I think are really healthy and are really positive in our community, and I think that's what people are expecting. And frankly, our cops, uh, they they will welcome that conversation as well. I I know that even as a young officer, I'd go to some things, I'm thinking, why am I here? Not because it's me, because why are the police here? Why are we dealing with a a neighborhood dispute? Why are we dealing with uh somebody who won't do their homework? Why are we dealing with, you know, an addiction issue that's that's been developed over years? Those kind of things. We're really good at crisis management and intervening to make things safe, but let's find that right solution uh for those community issues. And so I I really look forward to that that kind of discussion and those kind of things because I think that's really the, one of the really positive things that's going to come out of this of this whole thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Chief. Mr. Betts, anything to wrap up?
Nothing to add, uh, Mr. Mayor, but thanks for the opportunity to go ahead and provide this information to city council and the community tonight.
All right. Mr. Frankel or Mr. Tripp, anything in closing?
Nothing to add for me. Appreciate Mr. Betts and Chief Carlson for your presentation. Thank you so much.
No, sir, nothing for me. Thank you all for the time spent on this very important issue.
All right. Uh, by my clock, it's ten thirty-one now. That concludes all the business of the Westminster City Council for tonight. At this point, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.